I can do that. It is like duck show. We were allowed to dress up? So the egg and community department is supposed to get me a blow-up cow for the parade, and they still didn't. I wanted a blow-up cow! If I was gonna be called a cow, I wanted to actually... I wanted to actually be a cow. But seriously, I do want to get a blow-up cow for the parade. If I'm re-elected for parade season, I would like to wear a blow-up cow. I think that'd be fun! Amazon! You can get a horse, you can get a cow. Right? There's a joke in there.
Oh yeah. I think we're seeing anything. Yeah. Gee, this is great.
Yeah, I've been talking to someone, like right here.
Will you want the maps? Will you want the maps? Uh, good morning, everyone, we're gonna be starting in about one minute.
Damn, those are good doughnuts.
Are they?
I even bought my name tag.
Do you want introductions right at the beginning, or do you want introductions just before background?
Just before the background.
Okay.
That's normally what we do, isn't it?
Yeah, sometimes, yep, for sure. Okay.
But if you want to send the lambs off to slaughter first, you can introduce us on.
It's all good. Ready? Ready? Okay. Are we ready? All right, everyone, uh, we're, we're just a minute here after, a couple minutes after nine, so I'm going to call this public meeting, or sorry, this public hearing by, for bylaw twenty-five slash zero five zero to order, nine oh two. First, I'll explain the process. During this public hearing, members of the public may participate both in person and by virtual attendance online when the chair announces the opportunity in the meeting. We ask that you be patient with us as we work through these technical difficulties, should they occur. Members of the audience here in Caroline will be asked to come forward to this microphone when asked. If you are attending this public hearing via the online Zoom meeting, the process is a bit different than our regular council meetings, as we are having the availability for the public hearing both here in Caroline in person and at the county's main office in Rocky Mountain House virtually and virtually online. The chair will inform members of the pu, of the public wishing to speak when it is your turn, to speak in favor of or pu, or in opposition to this bylaw. Participants wishing to speak will be given a maximum of five minutes with a one-minute warning before your time is up. If you're watching the hearing via the council YouTube channel, it is advised to mute the YouTube unless via the online Zoom meeting, as there is a thirty-second delay on the YouTube channel. If you are participating via the online Zoom meeting and somehow get disconnected, please rejoin the meeting with the link provided and the callback number that was provided, and we'll add you to the meeting. The process. Everyone present shall register. All persons wishing to speak shall be recognized by the chair. Every presenter, when told it's their turn, shall identify themselves, their organization if any, and whether they in favor of or opposed to the bylaw. If a presenter becomes repetitive, they may be limited by the chair. If a presenter or a member of the audience becomes disrespectful, they may be asked to leave by the chair. No outside recording devices will be permitted. We ask that the cellphones be turned off or put on silent, and breaks within the hearing will be called at the chairman's discretion. First, we'll have the planning administration will explain the background of the proposed land use bylaw, followed with a PowerPoint presentation to explain the land use bylaw rewrite process. At any time, council members have the opportunity to ask questions. Following administrative background, any submissions received from other agencies will then be read out. Then, anyone who is present in person and whoever is in favor of the new bylaw will be asked to make his or her presentation. After, we will go online to ask if anyone participating virtually would like to speak in favor of the bylaw. Following this, comments will be requested from anyone who is opposed to the bylaw, first for the in-person participants and then to the online participants. The county's planning team will have the last word and thus respond to any of the issues previously raised. So before we start into our background, I'd like to do a quick, uh, round of introductions, and we'll start off, oh.
Reeve, I would also move to acceptance of the agenda here today.
Oh, thank you. Counselor, sorry, Councilor Melhoff has made the motion to accept the agenda as presented today. I'll call the question, all those in favor. Carrie, thank you, thank you for that point of order. So let's start with introductions, and, um, just looking over to the technical, we have to press our own mics, correct, for that to happen? Yeah, okay, so just press your mic.
Yep. Uh, Jenny Melhoff, I'm the counselor for Ward One.
Uh, good morning, everyone, Darryl Lawheed, counselor for Ward Three.
You have to press your.
Good morning, everybody, Jordan Northcott, Ward Four, counselor.
Good morning, Michelle Swanson, Ward Seven, and Reeve.
Good morning, everyone, Brian Sirmack, counselor for Division Six.
Good morning, everyone, Neil Ratliff, Ward Five, counselor.
Good morning, Barbara Gibson, counselor.
Good morning, Rick Emmons, CEO.
Good morning, Janet Thompson, Legislative Services Assistant.
Thank you. All right. Get you on.
Not working.
Good morning, Christine Hager, Director of Planning and Emergency Services.
Good morning, Elizabeth Armitage, um, planning consultant with Vicinia Planning and Engagement.
Thank you. So to start us off, uh, I'll ask Director Hager to outline the background of this application, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, members of council and the community. So, uh, land use bylaw seven-one-four-zero-one was adopted by council initially in two thousand and one. Review of the land use bylaw stated, uh, started in two thousand and twenty-three by Clarida County Council with a series of launch events, uh, where we kicked off some in-person public open house meetings in Nordegg, Rocky Mountain House, Caroline, and Leslieville, um, supplemented by some online virtual events for those unable to attend in person. Um, in addition to this more general approach to gather feedback, uh, as we begin, uh, began the rewrite process, a public advisory committee and a council steering committee were also established by bylaw to serve as an ongoing, uh, source of guidance throughout the development, uh, of the land use bylaw rewrite project. These committees have been meeting during key project phases, um, throughout the course of the last year and a half, uh, to provide input on the direction of the rewrite and address any emerging topics and concerns. And during this process, uh, council also directed that while significant land use bylaw updates were necessary, given the age of the document, that the overall goal was to simplify, reduce the number of districts, and make the document more user-friendly should key aspects, um, of the guide, and rewrite that process. Further to this, the Village of Caroline was amalgamated with the county during the land use, uh, bylaw rewrite process, I'm sure everyone's aware, and this added an additional scope in terms of incorporating Caroline's land use bylaw into the overall Clarida County land use bylaw, while also continuing to ensure that, um, the overall land use bylaw rewrite was comprehensive and considered some of the unique considerations, um, of the various hamlets and regions, uh, within the, the county, which is very large. In addition to providing greater clarity on the planning and development processes, it remained a goal of the land use bylaw rewrite, um, would try and streamline and reduce any kind of unnecessary, um, legislative process. As the final version, uh, draft, of course, of this land use bylaw took place over the last few months, um, documents underwent a comprehensive legal review to ensure alignment with provincial legislation, uh, what guides us in our, uh, policymaking in municipalities, and that it would withstand any scrutiny in, in situations where it might come before the Land and Property Rights Tribunal, the Subdivision Development Appeal Board, or, uh, the provincial courts. Uh, given the range of uses and consideration that are in place across Clarida County, from, uh, Nordegg to Caroline to Leslieville, and all of the rural agricultural and forested areas in between, administration and the consultant work to reduce the districts, condol, and to consolidate some of the regulations, uh, of the use of the land. Um, the changes to the land use bylaw are numerous, um, and thorough, and, uh, can be categorized in seven key areas, uh, which, uh, Liz is going to get into as we further into the presentation. Uh, just wanting to add as well that, um, this, uh, bylaw that's before, um, council for this public hearing process today was received at the regular council meeting held on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Council reviewed and gave first reading to the bylaw, directing, uh, administration to make some amendments to bylaw twenty-five zero five zero as required by legislation. Notice of today's public hearing was advertised in the local papers, uh, as, uh, witnessed by the number of people that are here to give us their feedback today, so thank you for coming, and was advertised, um, and invited, uh, to be here for the public hearing, and then we also had, uh, referrals that would be sent out to our agencies and neighboring communities. And upon consideration of, uh, the recommendation, um, from the public hearing, council will be the one to consider whether or not to grant second and third reading to bylaw twenty-five zero five, um, for adoption of a new land use bylaw. So at this point, uh, in the introduction and the background, I'm gonna turn it over to Liz Armitage, who's going to get into the, the details of the changes that were made to the land use bylaw.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Christine. Um, as Christine mentioned, I'm gonna get into a bit more of the details regarding the proposed land use bylaw. There, a number of significant land use bylaw updates have been proposed, which is the consolidated definitions and categories and an expanded definition list. In the most recent version, we've also moved those definitions to the end of the document. We've also added general and specific use regulations, um, and we've also added administrative updates and clarity on process, subdivision regulations, additional enforcement tools. We've also incorporated short-term rentals and renewable energy bylaws, and we've greatly reduced the number of districts and created, um, sorry, the number of districts and Nordegg special regulations as well to help streamline the land use bylaw. Um, we've also looked at direct, uh, we've done specific updates for version six, which is the version that is presented today. We've looked at the direct market sales, we've updated that definition, and we've added language to clarify that no development permit is required. The definitions, as I mentioned, have been relocated to the end of the document. We've added exempted uses in each district. The exempted uses are items that do not require a permit, so we've done that within each district now. We've addressed gates in Nordegg, specifically, we've added language to allow entry gates in Nordegg, and that also states that a development permit is not required. We've removed the maximum floor area in the leisure residence district. Um, in regards to water wells, there has not been a consensus on changing wa, the, on a change regarding water wells in Nordegg, and therefore, at this time, no change has been included. Um, additionally, administration has not found any conclusive studies to support the change based on information we were able to locate from sources such as the province over the last month. Um, we continue to recommend that that research be done and be budgeted for to complete an analysis of that, to make an educated decision. We've also continued with the ongoing cleanup and typos and numbering throughout the document. One thing we want to take a moment to touch on that we talked about at the open houses that were held recently is what is discretion? Discretion is really important in a land use bylaw in that it provides flexibility for residents and opportunities for businesses to incorporate a degree of flexibility. Without flexibility, there's no degree that allows the approving authority to adapt or create un, to reduce red tape where needed and address unique circumstances. So, a discretionary use is a potentially impactful use that requires additional consideration when a decision on whether to approve them is being made. Location, adjacent uses, potential conditions that mitigate impacts such as landscape screening, noise studies, parking, lighting, can be con, conditioned onto a discretionary use development permit and require that they be addressed by the applicant. Um, they may also be refused if they are not appropriate in a particular area. By having them as discretionary, public consultation and consideration of circumstances can play a role. To create a bylaw that is resident and business-friendly, at least having the, these uses as an option provides the opportunity for them to be evaluated and potentially refused or approved or mitigate concerns. We also want to acknowledge that the land use bylaw is a living document. Land use bylaws everywhere across the province, as they're required in every municipality by the province, um, are not a document that sits on a shelf. They are used every day, um, by different people in different contexts. And so, we want to acknowledge that the bylaw is frequently updated. For example, new industries emerge, new challenges or concerns are identified, um, and so, updates happen. There's three potential avenues to amend the land use bylaw. One is the public, meaning somebody comes in and says, "I want to do something that's not permitted in this use, can I, can we add it?" And they go through that process. One is council. Council at any time can say, "We've identified a thing we would like you to look at. Administration, please go do some homework, come back and let us know what our options are and how we can do something." Or administration can come forward and say, um, "We've noticed that this is a continual problem, we'd like to work to address that and do an amendment." And then, ultimately, any amendment to the land use bylaw, per the municipal government act, can only be approved by council. There is always a public hearing, a first reading, public hearing, second and third reading to approve a change. Um, reviews can be conducted at any time, but the requirements of this bylaw state that it will be, occur annually at an administration perspective to bring forward to council. We want to take a moment to discuss recreation-leisure vehicle storage, um, particularly the personal aspect of this, and we want to state that development permits are not required for personal recreational vehicle storage in the following circumstances. Seven RVs in the agricultural district, four RVs in country residential, um, or country residential agricultural district, and one RV in the hamlet residential district. In the leisure residential district, one RV can be utilized for living and sleeping accommodations. A maximum of five can be used as staff housing in the DTN district and industrial district. Um, essentially, what we've done on the agr, on the, all the districts for recreation-leisure vehicle storage is tried to make it so that a lot of practices that are currently happening in the county are continued to allowed to be happening. Um, we're trying to reflect what's occurring on the ground today. We also have addressed natural resource extraction and processing, also known as gravel pits. Um, the updated land use bylaw requires all newly identified gravel pits to go through a redesignation process to become a direct control district. This means a fe, a full land use change and council approval to have a new gravel pit. Um, expanded setbacks from adjacent properties and developments have been incorporated. Studies and information requirements for environmental, transportation, haul routes, et cetera, are also identified. Um, we've also identified the requirement for public consultation, and essentially, we are looking at a detailed stringent review process for any new gravel pits. We've also done a lot of work to address C cans. C cans must follow setbacks, lot coverage, and other regulations in the district. C cans in the agricultural district do not require a development permit. Allowance for temporary C cans in other districts in certain instances such as active construction or during the moving process. Um, they shall not be attached to a principal building or stacked, except in the industrial district where noted in a development permit. They shall not be utilized for signage or advertising, and there could be the requirement for additional screening and buffering from roads and adjacent properties. The renewable energy section has also been, um, updated and added to reflect the renewable energies bylaw that was recently passed by council. The next few slides are an overview of the simplified land use districts. Um, I'm not gonna read each one of these, as it's, there's quite a bit. I'm not going to read each one of these, as it's, there's quite a bit. However, this is available on the materials on the website, and we can answer questions one-on-one outside of the public hearing for those who do have questions. But essentially, we did a comprehensive review of both Clearwater Counties and Caroline's land use bylaws, combined them, reduced the districts wherever practical. We do want to take a moment and specifically talk about the Nordague and Hamlet districts. The Nordague districts, there was a lot of them with a lot of duplication within those districts. So, what we've done is streamlined those districts, combined them with broader county districts rather than having the duplication. And then, we've also drafted a section of core requirements that were repetitive in each district to make it one area. And then, the Hamlet districts, we've clearly formatted them in the same way, the setbacks, the lot coverage, the heights, and regulations. And then, we've used definitions to clearly define every use across all the districts. We also want to take a moment to talk about the agricultural district overview. Largely, nothing has changed. Landowners can continue to use their land and build as they did previously. Districts have been reformatted to be clear, concise, and provide direction to applicants with similar use definitions and regulations. Everyday residential and agricultural uses are permitted, with exemptions for development permits for agricultural operations. We've increased the number of permitted uses, and essentially, more complex uses, and those that aren't typically agricultural but can potentially fit within the agricultural designated parcel. There's the discretionary permit, and those decisions will be made by the municipal planning commission in the same way they are currently made by the municipal planning commission. Another important step that has been taken is to incorporate Nordague and the Village of Caroline. So, we've taken the both existing land use bylaws and combined them, and brought in the village into the county's bylaw, which is a required thing that needs to happen after an amalgamation. Nordague has special sections to provide further direction to planning urban and design. And, we do also want to acknowledge the recent consultation and engagement that has occurred. Revised drafts of the land use bylaw have been posted and shared with the community throughout the process. Updated drafts, most recently, were shared in March and April, and after the first reading in advance of today's public hearing. And ultimately, the Public Advisory Committee and the Steering Committee have been integral components of this entire project, where we have been consulting with them throughout. Our consultation and engagement process has been guided by four community engagement objectives. First is importance, emphasizing the significance of the land use bylaw, rewrite as a technical document with impacts on the community's future development, livability, and sustainability. We have also been guided by the objective of transparency, highlight the commitment to the open and inclusive processes, and ensuring that stakeholders have had opportunities to provide input. We've also looked at the benefits and communicate the potential benefits of an updated land use bylaw, such as an improved urban planning, land use planning, increased economic opportunities, and enhanced quality of life, as well as collaboration by working with the residents' stakeholders, the Public Advisory Committee, and the Steering Committee. And on that note, I will hand it back to Christine.
Thank you, Liz. So, that's right, just looking at my slides. So, I'm going to end off the administrative background, talking about the process again and what's happened so far, and then will lead into some of the feedback that we've heard from people that have submitted online or via our website form or through email. And then, the chair will go back to going through the public hearing process for folks. So, revised draft of the land use bylaw have been shared with the community through the process in efforts to ensure a degree of transparency. And most recently, those comprehensive rewrites were shared with the public in March, Version 3, and April, Version 4, to review in advance of those public open houses I mentioned earlier. So, those public open houses were held across the county at both the project kickoff and then at the final stages of the draft creation in May. So, following the last open houses, all the feedback was received and considered by the Public Advisory Committee and Council Steering Committee, and administration and the consultant helped consolidate that into a draft that's before council that was what we call Draft 5 for the first reading. And that initial land use bylaw rewrite communications and engagement plan was approved by council in August of 2023. And then, throughout the process, and in accordance with an amalgamation with the Village of Caroline, which was mentioned, we had to change that process timeline to try and build in the two communities into one land use bylaw. And as we worked through the process of creating the land use bylaw draft sections, that Public Advisory Committee and some of those members are here today, so thank you for coming in support of the bylaw or to provide further comment. And the land use bylaw steering committee, which was a committee made up of counselors sitting before you here today, they were with us through the whole process to ensure there was enough time to incorporate those changes. And we amended that final communications plan in February of this year after the amalgamation and brought that first reading for council in June. And so, Liz kind of went through some of the sections that were addressed within the land use bylaw in terms of what was materially changed, but the consultation was guided by the engagement objectives of, you know, emphasizing the fact that a significance of the land use bylaw rewrite as a technical document that administration use in order to assist the community with future development, livability and sustainability, transparency, and highlighting the commitment to an open and inclusive process, and of course, a public hearing is part of that process. Communicate the potential benefits of an updated land use bylaw, which Liz went through with you in thorough detail, and collaboration between the residents, the stakeholders that we have as referrals, government officials, in shaping that future of our community. So, after the draft, land use bylaw was posted on the website back in, that would have been March, April timeframe. They, we did host eight open houses with the public that were advertised as well in our papers as per usual. And based on the feedback collected, there was a second What We Heard report created. There was one at the beginning and one at the end of the process that was also available on our website, which provides more detail in terms of the types of feedback that the Public Advisory Committee and the Council Steering Committee would have considered in the process at that time. As a group, we've all collectively worked diligently to review and consider with an open mind all of the feedback that's been submitted throughout this important project, and I know council's here today to hear from you as well. And a land use bylaw is a very technical and complex document, and many parts must be considered in relation to higher level of legislation that we're required to operate under, and then the realities of implementation at the ground level when people are coming in and applying for permits. And then, of course, should there be a problem, we have to have the ability within the document to enforce complaints if somebody isn't compliant with the land use bylaw. The land use bylaw works to protect the private property rights and enjoyment of use of land while also giving landowners the opportunity to have, opportunity to have a quality of life, build a house, open a business, and other ventures that might be appropriate in the district to which they reside. And as part of this process, it'll be noted too that staff have to consider all pieces of land use planning and objectives of the municipal development plan when considering the components that are inputted into the draft land use bylaw. As part of the process, and is typical with new bylaw creation, it just makes for a cleaner process, staff proposes that council consider appeal and replace versus an amendment to the existing land use bylaw document created in 2001. That act allows for all those previous amendments that have come, whether it's a contextual text amendment or a land use amendment of a redistricting in that period of time to be consolidated into one document, and then all the maps attached. And that's why the package is several hundred pages large. There's lots of maps at the end that show you all the districts in Clearwater County, and also then incorporating the districts from the Village of Caroline into one Clearwater County land use bylaw. So, this would be a standard process for a rewrite of a land use bylaw of this nature, and with the age of it, that is what staff's recommending council consider. And so, again, Liz mentioned, Version 6 of the land use bylaw with track changes was attached to the agenda item. The track changes version reflects the direction that was received from council at the first reading, amending that Version 5 that would have been at the first reading of the bylaw back in June. So, and I do believe Liz mentioned it, for the record, I'm going to state again, those changes council directed at that point were the definitions being moved to the back of the document. Those were not noted and read track changes because the definitions themselves were not all materially changed. If there was a material change to the definition in the move from the front to the back, that will be noted and read, but otherwise, for simplicity of reading, the definitions will not be noted, read in track changes as they were moved. Adding the exempt uses section was something else to each district, so every district's going to look like it was significantly amended, but that adding of the exempt uses section to each district allowed for adding clarity, adding as well, direct market sales to a no permit required section was another change that was directed at the first reading. Adding the ability for storage of one recreational vehicle to the Hamlet Residential District was a change that was made, and removing that maximum floor area in the leisure residence district, I think you touched on that, but, and then changing some of the verbiage to allow for gates, et cetera, and any clerical errors or omissions, numbering, that sort of thing. In addition, all maps identifying land use districts for each property, as I noted, are included, and that includes the Hamlets and all of the townships that form part of the land use bylaw, are attached to this agenda item on the website and linked. And due to one recent land use amendment that happened earlier this week, the initial package that was sent out to council on July 18th was actually updated and revised yesterday to reflect that one mapping change. So, the maps changed yesterday, but other than that, the bylaw itself and the land use bylaw draft remained the same. Lastly, my planning team will want me to speak to the planning direction. We mentioned legislation. Section 6401 of the Municipal Government Act states, "Every municipality must pass a land use bylaw." That's why we're here today. Section 6401.12356 and 7 states when a land use bylaw must address and what matters may be addressed. So, at this point, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn the mic back to you to go through process.
We do have one more slide.
Oh.
Step recommendations.
You bet. Yeah, we can do that now. So, sorry, last slide. Appreciate that, bear with me. Council consider, the staff recommendation would obviously be, council consider granting second and third reading of the land use bylaw 25/050 to repeal and replace Clearwater County's land use bylaw 714/01 and Caroline's land use bylaw 450. Options before council today would be to grant second and third reading of the draft as presented, that's option, amend Version 6 draft of the land use bylaw that's presented today, and direct us in terms of what those amendments are with granting second and third reading, or granting second reading and something else. Other option would be that the bylaw could be tabled for second reading, could be tabled for third reading, and then have those readings at a later date. And then, of course, the option is always before council to refuse second reading. In any of those cases, we just would seek clarity in terms of what the next steps for administration would be. And now, I will officially turn the chair back over the mic.
Thank you, Director Hagert. At this time, I'll ask council if they have any questions from administration. And I'm not going to be able to see the lights as normal, so you're going to have to lift, lift your hand if you have any questions for administration. See none?
Oh, I do.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see your hand. Counselor Ratcliffe, go ahead.
Thank you, Reeve Swanson. My first question is procedural. This public hearing is based on Revision 6, and the first reading was based on Revision 5. I'm told that as of yesterday afternoon, Revision 6 wasn't posted on the county website. So, what I'd like to be clear on is that we are actually in compliance with the MGA by proceeding with Revision 6.
What's MGA?
Municipal Government Act. There are requirements for the time that documents are available to the public?
Director Hagert?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my understanding with the council agenda item that was published through the iCompass system that that should have been on the website as of July 18th.
Under the agenda.
Correct.
Right.
Which is where it legislatively is required to be.
Okay. And still, is that sufficient time? Does that, does July 18th meet the requirements of the MGA for the public to review a document that's being presented and potentially voted on on the July 24th?
Director Hagert?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Ratcliffe. Legislatively, the Municipal Government Act wouldn't get into the specifics of dates, obviously. We have advertising requirements that I mentioned earlier that we did meet in terms of advertising the public hearing. In terms of council agenda packages and when they're published, that's up to council's discretion in that procedural bylaw that council has. And I would say that this is no different than any other process that we have for council packages or public hearings, where they generally come out the Thursday before the Tuesday meeting, which is about a four-day timeframe. Coming out the Friday before a Thursday meeting is a five-day timeframe, so it's nothing unusual in terms of timeframe or process.
Okay, but there's a requirement for, there's a timeframe requirement between first reading and second reading?
That is correct. If I can, Madam Chair, answer that question that's coming from council. And the timeframe between first and second reading was achieved through having the first reading in June, and then some time for advertising, the minimum period of time, which is the two weeks in advance of the public hearing, and then the second and third reading can proceed if council chooses.
But it's a different document.
That's, that's pretty standard in the process in terms of, of document. If there was material changes, like we're making additions based on feedback from council for the first draft, and depending on what council does today with the public hearing, they could take the information and direct further changes. If they are of material significance to the intent, and council feels like they need to restart the process, that's certainly at their discretion. I would say that the amendments that were made so far in the document were either for clarity, moving definitions to the back, for instance, doesn't change the material effect of the bylaw. Adding things where perhaps there was thoughts where, like the RV in that one district, that doesn't necessarily materially impact the public or the bylaw, but if council wishes to make further amendments which materially impact the change to the bylaw, that would be, depending on what the outcome of today's meeting would be. But I feel comfortable that process, we do amend bylaws from first reading to second reading. It depends on the scope of those changes, though, on the answer, so I apologize, it's not, it's not clear until I know what you tell me we're going to change.
Yes, okay, thank you. I have one more, if I may. Which version of this land use bylaw has been referred to legal? Has Version 6, or which?
It would have been Version 3 and 4. Like, 3 and then 4 was the version post-legal review, if I'm not mistaken. I'd have to go back and look at my notes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions from council?
Yes.
Counselor Sirmak?
Yeah, I just want to have a real clear understanding of this bylaw, that it is a living document, and it can be brought back by anybody within this room at any time. That includes a public, council, and administration, at little to no cost to the individual to bring it up. Is this true, or is this not true? Because it's ridiculous to hold this thing over if it can be appealed and/or looked at at any moment in time.
Director Hagert?
Thank you, Reeve Swanson and Counselor Sirmak for the question. You are correct with the process in terms of amendment. Liz outlined that earlier in the PowerPoint slides, that council can direct an amendment like this land use bylaw rewrite, that the public, as they come for applications for a redistricting or a rezoning from, let's say, agricultural to a country residential agricultural parcel, that is an amendment to the land use bylaw. So, by way of paying an application fee for a land use amendment, that is the process to amend the land use bylaw. That happens fairly regularly, if you follow along with our council agenda packages. I'd say that we have a couple every meeting where we're amending the land use bylaw. I'd say that we have a couple every meeting where we're amending the land use bylaw. The third one, and it is as directed by the bylaw, the new bylaw, should council approve it, is that there would be an annual update to this, so we're not coming back with a 20-year process revision for the, the contextual wording of the bylaw or the effectiveness of it. Again, that's common in municipalities, but as a best practice moving forward, we'd like to see it reviewed more frequently, so it is continually being updated. And then the public can ask for an amendment in, in accordance with our fees schedule bylaw, that, that can be something that's just like applying for a land use amendment, there's a fee associated, and a change would then be before council to make a decision on whether that change would be implemented. At the administrative level, we can't amend the land use bylaw, we would have to bring that application forward to council, much like we do with a, a redistricting or any other type of application to amend it. So, by council, by an application, or by the public coming forward, you are correct.
So, so then, if the public wants to come and do an amendment, they come to planning, or they can come to one of their counselors, and we can bring it forward for them at little to no cost to the applicant, right?
Either or would work, yes. And then, it, and it may not happen immediately, depending, like, if they apply for an application to amend it, it would go through a regular, like, like a land use amendment process, and it would be processed in due course. An, an ask coming to a counselor may come as part of that annual review, perhaps. I'm not sure what council will direct us in that case, but it would be up to council to determine.
Yeah, I just wanted it very clear out there that anybody can bring this forward at any time, which I think is great transparency to this bylaw. It's a great ground, great foundation to start from. Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Okay, seeing none. I'll now ask Director Hagert to present any comments received from referral agencies, please.
Sorry, I'm used to someone turning the mic on for me, I apologize for the delay. So, from our referrals we received back, we did get an answer from the MD of Big Horn, which is a neighboring rural municipality. "Good afternoon, thanks for the opportunity to review the draft land use bylaw, we appreciate all the work that's gone into this update, it's clear a lot of thought and effort has been put into it. We've gone through the document and wanted to share a few comments and some suggestions." Section 3.5.3, it might be helpful to clarify that referrals should be also considered the intermunicipal collaboration framework, not just the intermunicipal development plan. Since Clariter County and the MD of Big Horn are exempt from having an IDP, as per the ministerial order they've noted, the ICF bylaw is their main tool for coordination. So, they suggested a slight amendment to 3.5.3 to say, "As directed by the municipal development plan, intermunicipal development plan, or intermunicipal collaboration framework as applicable." This would help ensure consistency with our existing agreements. Next comment they had is related to section 1.1, sorry, 11.19 and 0.20. "We noticed updates to the direct control districts for large-scale renewable energy and aggregate operations." They had some questions in terms of radius notification, they proposed 1.6 kilometers in their land use bylaw, setback verification, they wanted to know how they confirm it, will nearby MD residents be able to view details like visual screening, hall routes, et cetera, mitigation plans? And they kind of, they included some maps of our municipal boundaries, and, and other than that, that's pretty much a summary of the comments that that referral agency had made. I'm going to move to the next one, which is Alberta Health Services. And just to be clear, if, if there's things that need to be addressed, administration will touch on that towards the end. We're just going to be reading out what we've received at this point. And from Alberta Health Services and other referral agency, their letter states, "Local community planning and design directly affects the health and well-being. Communities can support the prevention and management of chronic health conditions by creating healthier places for people to live, work, and play. Supporting Alberta Health Services' vision, 'Healthy Albertans, Healthy Communities Together', 'Safe, Healthy Environments' endorses the use of evidence-based public health approach to designing healthy communities. Healthy community design creates stronger social connections, prevents injuries, chronic diseases, and cancer, and makes communities safer and more resilient by promoting healthy lifestyle choices. Healthy community design can also have a social and economic benefit." Alberta Health Services', "Safe, Healthy Environments," reviewed Clariter County's land use bylaw from a public health perspective. Healthy communities by design, H-C-B-D, concepts and conventional areas of public health concern were considered. Prioritizing healthy communities by design principles will help better, help build healthier people and communities." Next part of their statement says, "Transportation networks include safe, accessible transportation systems and incorporate a diversity of transportation modes and place a priority on active transportation over the use of private vehicles. Prioritizing infrastructure to support active transportation modes can increase physical activity and reduce environmental impacts." AH-S-S-H-E, which is that Safe and Healthy Environments, supports transportation options that are connected, active, safe, and accessible for all. The land use bylaw mentions the use of traffic impact assessments throughout, as a rural municipality, it is reasonable that transportation focus would be on vehicular methods. AH-S-S-H-E supports policies that require the provision of safe pedestrian movement and access, section 8.4 and 3.10.1. AH-S-S-H-E supports requirement under 11.6, manufactured home parks for the provision of safe pedestrian movement. AH-S-S-H-E recommends exploring options for connection to regional trail systems, recreational amenities, walkability within the hamlets where possible. Neighborhood design includes those neighborhoods where people can easily connect with each other and with a variety of day-to-day services. Prioritizing residential developments to identify growth areas intentionally of high density provides greater opportunity for achieving complete communities and incorporating forms of active transportation. AH-S-S-H-E supports designing complete, compact, and connected communities. AH-S-S-H-E supports policies for the retention of existing plants and trees, 3.4.4. AH-S-S-H-E supports policies that consider stormwater management include fire smart principles, 3.6.2. They support the use of crime prevention through environmental design, 8.1.8.3 of the bylaw. And they note the land use bylaw mentions a use of mixed-use developments, and it says, "While HS supports the mixed-use planning concept where appropriate," in land use bylaw 8.7, are specifically mentioned under the following districts, 11.9, Hamlet, Commercial and Mixed Use District. Discretionary use and specifies that residential dwelling must be on the second floor and will only be allowed where are no nuisance effects on adjacent parcels. Under the land use bylaw, nuisance is defined as a noise, air pollutant, dust, odor, heat, light, vibration, fire, unsafe unsightly storage of goods, garbage, or waste. Nordig Historic Commercial Core District, where mixed-use dwellings are permitted use alongside personal services. AH-S-S-H-E has concerns there is potential conflict between personal service and residential. Personal service under the land use bylaw includes dry cleaners, which are incompatible with sensitive uses. Housing includes affordable, accessible, and good-quality housing for all that is free of hazards and enables people to engage in activities of daily living while optimizing their health. AH-S-S-H-E supports development of diverse and suitable housing options. Access to quality, suitable, affordable housing positively impacts physical and mental health. AH-S-S-H-E supports the inclusion of policies that will allow for a variety of housing forms and tenures, such as those identified under 8.7, which allow for secondary suites in a variety of residential districts, and for multi-unit dwellings on a discretionary basis where suitable and compatible, 8.7.3. AH-S-S-H-E supports policies that consider site suitability in terms of not only onsite servicing, but also density and stormwater management, 8.7.3, 8.1.2. They support the use of buffers, setbacks, and screening to reduce industrial-sensitive use interface, 8.1.1, 8.1.6, and 8.1.7. Guest house rooms are only allowed where there is an existing principal dwelling use and are prohibited from having kitchen facilities under policy 9.9.2. Under the land use bylaw, guest homes are clearly distinguished from secondary suites as they do not contain all the mandatory requirements for the provision of separate sleeping, food preparation, and bathing facilities. This means guest homes will not meet the housing regulation and minimum housing health standards under the Public Health Act. As a result, they are not suitable for use as rental dwellings. The land use bylaw is clear that the guest homes are not intended to be contained dwellings, and AH-S-S-H-E supports the policies that restrict the use of guest houses as suites or rental accommodations. 9.1.1, secondary suites are self-contained units providing sleeping, washroom, kitchen facilities, and are listed as permitted use under section 1, sorry, 11.1 Agricultural District, 11.5 Leisure Residence District, 11.13 Recreational Facility District. AH-S-S-H-E supports a requirement of these units to be serviced by water and sewage systems in compliance with provincial regulations, and that the addition of a secondary suite not hinder or impede the servicing of the principal dwelling, 9.1.1.3. Boarding homes are identified as a discretionary use and only listed under the Hamlet Residential District 11.4. The definition under the land use bylaw appears to correlate to the term "rooming house" used by AH-S-S-H-E, where the ratio of shared bathing and kitchen facilities cannot exceed one to eight persons under the Public Health Act. AH-S-S-H-E recommends the alignment of the definition with that used under the Public Health Act. 9.3, short-term rentals, under the short-term rentals bylaw, as well as section 2.1, one of the land use bylaw, AH-S-S-H-E supports the requirement for short-term rentals with to comply with Alberta Safety Codes Act and any other applicable municipal, provincial, or federal legislation, which would include the housing regulation, AR 173/1999, and the minimum housing and health standards. There's more. Food systems include a built environment that can support access to and availability of health foods for all. HS, I'm just going to shorten that to HS, supports local food systems that offer healthy food options for everyone. The land use bylaw includes policies for the protection of agricultural areas. Was that me?
No.
Sorry, I don't know if it was me, I didn't touch the mic. I thought something fell. Apologies, everyone, not sure what happened there. Food systems that offer healthy food options for everyone, the land use bylaw includes policies for the protection of agricultural areas, preventing negative impacts on agricultural from incompatible land uses. Agricultural capacity is a key aspect of healthy food systems. Some expert opinion indicates that agricultural land and workforce capacity are essential for a healthy food system, particularly on the region or, regional or local levels. Initiatives like APRA's and community market, market gardens mentioned in the land use bylaw can have many climate co-benefits, including improving air quality, allowing for water infiltration, and reducing stormwater runoff. It also supports local biodiversity, providing, by providing habitats for food for pollinators and other beneficial organisms. HS supports these as discretionary uses, allowing, allowing for site suitability and risk management of onsite-specific basis. HS supports the policies that make it easier for people to engage in urban agriculture, such as not requiring development permit for small greenhouses, 3.2.1ii. HS supports policies for urban agriculture, 9.3.3, backyard beehives, that are mindful of bear smart principles, such as those that restrict hives within the wildlife areas around Nordig, 9.3.3.5, under the land use bylaw. Under policy 3.2.1p and section 9.2, confined feeding operation, applications under the AOPA are exempt from requiring development permit. Please note that HS no longer routinely receives referrals from NRCB, and has such no opportunity to provide comment on CFO applications under AOPA. Next set of comments relate to natural environments, where natural environments are protected and natural elements are incorporated and are experienced by all and accessible to all. Access to natural areas promote physical activities, social interactions, and mental health. Green spaces can provide air quality and reduce climate impact, supporting a healthy, resilient ecosystem. Residents in environments with visible greenery and vegetation are 3.3 times more likely to take up frequent physical activity than those in areas without greenery. HS supports policies that restrict development on hazard lands such as steep slope, unstable banks, flood hazard areas, 9.5 of the land use bylaw, and supports ability to require a technical assessment and professional reports as required in 9.5.4 and 9.1.3. HS supports policies that restrict development adjacent to water features such as rivers, streams, lakes, or environmentally significant areas, and utilize setbacks, 9.3.1. HS supports policies that consider the broader impact on the water cycle, 9.7, or require environmental mitigation or protection plans, 9.1.3.5. HS supports elements under section 9.1.3 for the provision, for the protection of environmentally significant areas, and discouraging development on hazard lands, as mentioned previously. And HS supports policies for the retention of natural vegetation and incorporation of natural features, 9.1.3.4. Specific land use definitions and districts. Under the Public Health Act Food Regulation, AR 31-2006, bed and breakfast, B and Bs are defined as private dwellings occupied by the owner or operator that offers overnight lodging and meals for a fee to more, to no more than eight registered guests at one time. HS recommends an alignment of definition under those guests under section 9.8, that under the Food Regulation, to avoid confusion. HS recommends including a requirement to comply with all provincial and federal health regulations for direct market sales, 9.6. Campgrounds. Section 9.1 mentions ensuring site suitability and accessibility of natural areas, 9.1.2, and a requirement for general pedestrian circulation in the site plan, 9.1.1, but makes no mention of the requirement of dedicated pedestrian paths within campgrounds. Please, please note that under PHA Recreation Area Regulation, there are requirements regarding drinking water systems and public washrooms for campgrounds, regardless of the size, minor or major, as noted under your land use bylaw. Personal service under the land use bylaw contains potentially incompatible uses. HS recommends the definition of personal services exclude dry cleaners doing onsite laundering, and that specific site considerations be required for onsite dry cleaning to ensure compatibility with surrounding sensitive uses. Under section 3.2.1m and 9.4, day homes are exempt from requiring a development permit provided they meet all provincial leg, regulation. It was unclear under the land use bylaw if some home-based operations would require a business license. We don't require business licenses in Clariter County. I lost a page. Thank you. Day homes fall under the Early Learning and Childcare Act and regulations, however, the ELCC Act only applies to licensed day homes, while under the institution regulation, the definition of family day homes includes those that are not licensed. HS recommends the land use bylaw definition of day home align with these pieces of legislation. Under 3.2.1, a development permit is not required for a manufactured dwelling located in industrial or commercial camp as defined under the Public Health Act Regulations, industrial and construction camps. The correct name of the regulation is Work Camps Regulation. Note, these may be subject to HS approval, permit, accommodations, drinking water, et cetera. HS supports requirements under 11.2, direct control aggregate extrication, including but not limited to the reclamation plans, noise attenuation, phasing plans, dust control measures, water quality, quantity, and environmental assessments and engineering studies. HS supports the minimum 1,000-meter separation distance between campgrounds major and aggregate extraction, 9.1.5, and a 200-meter setback to any dwelling. General land use concept. HS supports requirements for outline plans, conceptual schemes, or other area structure plans for subdivisions and developments, 4.1.4, and redesignation applications, 7.1.3, and recommends stronger language be incorporated that these plans will be required for multi-lot subdivisions. Applications for development permit are required to provide a detailed site plan, 3.4.3 and 4.1c, including location of water and sewer services, surface water sources. HS recommends that this includes not only the location, but the type of drinking water service, well cistern, septic tanks with field, lagoons, mound, open discharge, under section 3.4.3b8 of the land use bylaw. This information is helpful for HS when reviewing applications as part of the referral process to ensure compliance with section 15 of the Nuisance and General Sanitation Regulation, 243/2003. Water wastewater. HS supports policies that restrict development where there are provision of water and wastewater services has not been made, 8.1.9.1. HS supports requirements for connection to regional ser, systems regulated by Alberta Environment and Protected Areas, or the use of deferred service agreements where appropriate, 8.1.9.4, 8.1.9.5, and 4.1.5. HS supports setbacks between water and wastewater, and recommends additional mention of needed for compliance that the setbacks detailed in section 15 of the act previously mentioned. Where developments are proposed with smaller lot sizes less than three acres, options may be significantly restricted for developments to meet setback distances mandated under section 15 of the PHA and GSR. This means that lots may be restricted to sewage-holding tanks or drinking-water cisterns as the only feasible option. While using the holding tank and cisterns is legitimate and acceptable, HS recommends considering the long-term financial implications associated with these options for county residents, and defers to municipal affairs as a primary regulator. HS supports the requirement for technical reports relating to water and wastewater servicing, 3.4.3, proximity to wastewater management facilities, 3.4.3i, and further mentions of geotechnical, hydrological, slope stability studies, landscaping, site reclamation, stormwater management. I could go on and on. I could go on and on. HSS Supports Policies and Ensure Provision of Drinking Water and Servicing is Compatible with Surrounding Uses 3.6.7 and Restrict Developments in Environmentally Significant and Flood Hazard Areas 3.6.7, 4.1.3. HSS Supports the Requirement Under 11.5 for Communal Water and Septic Systems for Multi-Unit Single-Lot or Multi-Lots Leisure Residence Developments. HSS Supports the Requirements Under Section 9.1 for Campgrounds to Have Potable Water Under Section 7.1 of the Recreation Area Regulation. If a Recreation Area Supplies Water for Human Consumption, use at a sink or shower facility through a hookup to a recreation vehicle, it must be potable. HSS Supports any requirements for developments in general to connect to municipal water, regional drinking systems. I think I've gone over that once earlier in their comments. Compatibility of Uses. We talked about the redesignation process. In 2018, the Alberta Medical Officers of Health recommended a setback of 100 meters between cannabis retail outlets and a 300-meter setback from cannabis retail outlets and schools, daycares, community centers. Additional, the MOH recommendations include proper storage and disposal of chemicals, proper disposal of waste products, and odor mitigation to prevent negative impacts on neighbors. These were captured under Section 9.2.7 in the land use bylaw and detail the setbacks of 100 to 150 meters from schools, municipal reserves, health facilities. HSS also recommends including a setback for daycares where youth frequent and redistricting of density of cannabis related to commercial operations. Section 11.8 Industrial Identify Staff Housing and Essential Public Services as Discretionary Uses. Parcel sizes range from .5-acre service to one-acre fully-service lots. HSS Supports Measures to Limit the Industrial Residential Sensitive Use Interface Such as Use of Screening, Buffering, and Setbacks. 11.8 of the Land Use Bylaw Site Development Specific Assessments 11.8. HSS had concerns under this section that some recreation minor uses like playgrounds and spaces for sensitive populations, children, are not compatible with industrial uses. Land Use Bylaw Definition of a Funeral Home Includes Crematoriums and is only listed once as discretionary use in 11.9 Hamlet Commercial and Mixed Use District. This land use district has multiple potentially incompatible uses identified. HSS recommends that crematoriums always be listed as discretionary uses, allowing for site suitability and risk management on a site-specific basis, and comply with the NGS Reg as well as the cemetery's general regulation. I'm going to skip through a little bit of this. HSS recommends that wherever daycares are permitted are discretionary where the district allows for dry cleaners and onsite cleaning, not just drop-off and pickup of services, that dry cleaners are listed as discretionary uses. Climate Resilience. HSS Supports Policies That Reduce Administrative Barriers for Incorporating Climate Resilient Concepts Such as Not Requiring Development Permits for Small-Scale Alternative Energy Systems 3.2.1. Supports, again, the requirement for emergency reclamation plans for wind conservation and energy conservation systems 9.2.5. HSS Supports Policies That Consider Cumulative Effects and Ensure Site Suitability of Renewable Energy. HSS Supports Policies That Encourage the Protection of Environmental Features, including environmentally significant areas, and those policies they mention are 9.2.5 and 9.2.6. They say thank you for considering their feedback as part of that process. I'm going to move on to the next referral agency is Alberta Transportation. This will acknowledge receipt of your circulation, and they have the following comments. Department Offers No Objections in Principle to the Land Use Bylaw. Pursuant to Section 6.18.3.1 of the Municipal Government Act, the department expects that the municipality will comply with any applicable items related to provincial highways and as well any other legislation applicable. Pursuant to Section 6.1841 of the Municipal Government Act, Alberta Transportation expects the municipality will mitigate traffic impacts generated by developments approved on the local road connections to the highway systems in accordance with Policy 7 of the provincial land use policies.
Excuse me, sir. Just one, but I will call upon you to take, so please take a seat. I will call for you to come when it is your turn. Right now, we need to listen to what the other...
[inaudible]
Absolutely. Excuse me, if you wouldn't mind, can you, we will listen to you. We're here to listen to everyone today, and everyone will take their term. Can you please? Would you like to be removed? Please have a seat. We will get to everyone here today. We've committed the day. We need to hear these referrals because there was a lot of information that I was, we are the ones to listen to, that need to be listened to this. You guys can too. There are people here that would like to speak today, and we will get to you. So, if we can please get through this one. Honestly, HSS typically does not give those kind of comments to at a regular public hearing. So, because it is the land use bylaw, they have offered comment on these, all the breakdown of which I've made some notes, and it will be passed around to the balance of council. So, we have on my list one more referral agency, which is Alberta Transportation, which we will hear, and then we will carry on to some of the public engagement. So, at this point in time, I will like to continue on with the hearing and have Ms. Director Hagert continue. Excuse me? Was that meant to be hurtful?
[inaudible]
Very good. Please carry on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And understanding the public hearing processes are a little different than an open house. It is hard for the public to understand, but we're trying to get through it as quick as possible. These referral entities have provided these comments on the land use bylaw like you guys will as well today. Lastly, from Alberta Transportation, transportation and economic corridors consistently include, the land use bylaw consistently includes where setbacks are being measured from, i.e. 70 meters from the center line of a highway or 300 meters from the highway right-of-way. Please contact them if you have any questions. So, that was the end of the referrals that I have for you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. So, at this point in time, we will invite any comments in support to, sorry. I will now ask the planning administration to add any comments to support the request and respond to any of the agency comments that we just heard, please.
I think, Madam Chair, I'm going to defer that to the second reading, and we're counseled if they choose to make amendments. We'll go through it at that time.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Now, at this time, I would like to invite any member of the public who is in attendance at this meeting wish to speak in favor of this bylaw. We invite the comments from the members of the public here in attendance first, and then we will move on to the people that are in, public that are in attendance at the main county administration building and wishing to speak in favor of the bylaw, and then move to those moving, that are in attendance virtually. So, I will now please ask the ones that are in attendance, or sorry. I believe these were submitted. We were supposed to do this minute, or are we going to do the submitted after?
We can do the public first.
Oh, we can do the public first? Okay. So, when you please come up to the microphone, please state your name and please provide your comments, and this is for applicants, or sorry, this is for the members of the public wishing to speak in favor of this bylaw. Please step, just step up to the mic.
Hello, thank you so much. My name is Carrie Bailey. This is all new to me, and what I want to say is I'm in favor of this process. I'm in favor of having things changed. What I'll say, though, is I can pretty much guarantee that almost 100% of the people behind me agree with what I'm going to say. For one, right off the bat, I'm not the sharpest tack, but I can see that HSS has way too much overreach in what is going on in our private lives. HSS took how long to go over the micromanaging that they're doing in our lives, and I can pretty much say that everyone in this building has had enough of being oppressed and micromanaged and told how to live. We have natural law on our hearts from God. We have, we have common sense. We are asking to live our lives in freedom, no tyranny. I can see here every person, this is, this is a heart matter. We're done with this. We need to live on land. We need to reconnect to land. Our children, nobody can afford land, and I'm hearing HSS telling, telling us how we're going to have a second residence, how we're going to have, what we're going to have on our land. Overreach. It's got to stop, and I'm telling you, there is an infiltration, and we all know it here. Every single person, I can guarantee, knows what's going on here. We're done with this. What I like, we're all, you know what? We need to learn to share the land. There's not, we can't afford it. Everyone here, we can't afford groceries. We can't afford rent. This is a crisis. It's time, it's time to move forward, listening, you know what? What I commend all of you, you all have good hearts, you all have families, and you all care, and it's like you're trying to maneuver through what's happened in the last few years. HSS has proven we cannot trust them, and it's like they're going to tell us how to live. So, they, I don't know how legally wise, but as a community, if you guys need a vote to say HSS needs to mind their business and get out of our business. I just looked, they don't need to be a part of our county planning. They can have suggestions about public health, but you know what? They need to be removed from us, the people. And it's like, the, I'm here in favor of this, of a second residence, and guess what? We need it because we need to share the land because we can't make it. We're dying. We're dying of, people are dying of starvation. People are dying of diseases. People are dying of what was done to them because of the overreach of the government. And so, we are here today, I guarantee, make, we need to be heard. HSS had a frickin' hour, sorry, an hour to say what they want. We don't want HSS. No, I bet you, show us hands. Who, who does not want HSS in their business? Right? We're done with HSS, and what we're asking for is, we don't want electric cars, we don't want 15-minute cities, we don't want to be gathered in like cattle and, and told how to live and what to do and where to go. We want to have freedom of travel. We want to have freedom of how we choose to live on our land. If I want a cican on my land, that's my business unless I'm doing harm to someone. Unless I'm doing harm to someone, unless I'm doing harm to the land, unless I'm doing harm to animals, I should have the right to eat, I should have the right to live, to breathe, to drink water, and treat that water how I see fit. And guess what? If I poison myself, that's on me, you know? And if I'm, if I'm doing something wrong, come and, come and talk about it. It's back, we need to be backed down to neighbors, we need to be backed down to sharing, and we need to be backed down to common sense and living free with this beautiful land. We're being constrained. We can't even, we can't even have a piece of land. Everyone needs to have land. Everyone needs to have the, the, so that, thank you for listening. I'm in favor of having a second residence on a property. I think it's about time, and I, I applaud the county for looking at this and seeing that we need, we have a need, that the county is seeing we have a need here, you know? We're, we're people, and we just need to live. I think that's it. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Please, please, please step up to, yeah. Please step up and state your name.
[inaudible]
Nope, nope. Oh, you're passing out.
I gotta put my back up. Somebody cut his side.
You can move it.
I don't know if there's a sound man at the back.
Can you please identify yourself?
Can the, can the people at the back hear nicely?
Yes.
Good.
State your name.
I'm going to try and stay on script.
State your name, please.
Good morning, council. Good morning, administration, the rest, and good morning, farmers probably, mostly. I was a little late. I had chores that lasted a little longer than normal, but I got a front row seat, so it's all good. My name is John Fletcher. I've lived nine years in Rocky Mountain House, and I've also lived and owned rural property in Clearwater County for 55 years. I know have many counselors, I have known many counselors who have chosen to run and been elected to serve. I would like to thank the current council for members for also choosing to run and be elected to serve the residents of Clearwater County and their particular distances. In addition, I would like to thank the residents of Clearwater County for serving on the various committees over the past few years who have helped put together the recommendations for updates to the land use bylaws. I commend current council for their choice of consultants for the process and feel it was very well put together and accommodating to residents. The existence, the existing LUB was developed over many years by previous councils and has, as public suggested feedback indicated, needed improvements and clarifications. I feel the current draft of the land use bylaws is also very positive, progressive, communicating for advancing Clearwater County current and prospective residents and their projects forward. I like the way the draft was set up with discretionary uses and variances thereof to be reviewed by council before application permits are approved. Further, is it appreciated, it is appreciated that this document is a living document. That doesn't mean it can be quickly killed. It's a living document, as mentioned, and that means that it can be adjusted by the ways mentioned previously. Everybody with rural property knows that good fences make good neighbors, and good eye-to-eye communication solves many situations. After reading many areas of the 240 pages, I have a few concerns, two of which I will deal with, actually, most of which I will deal with by email to the appropriate Clearwater County reps, but one of which I would like to bring up today. That concern is that I would suggest that developers of aggregate extraction permits be required to drill sample wells to the level of extraction permitted and have samples tested for toxins. The provincial government has a test center at the confluence of the Medicine and Red Deer Rivers, which monthly tests for approximately 230 various elements in the water. I have been told by usually reliable sources that testing on the Saskatchewan River near Rocky Mountain House has contained non-reportable levels of arsenic. That's a very scary word. These test results will therefore help decision-making as to where processed aggregate can safely be separated from groundwater and communication with river water. First Off Subdivisions Was Adopted on Compensant Grounds and is Fairly Easy to Obtain. I feel that the county missed a great opportunity on the same grounds for the second off. That's in the rearview mirror now. Having done two multiple subdivisions in Clearwater County, I can factually say that they are not easy. It was mentioned in some of the comments that subdivisions are easy. Been there, done that, they are not easy. Even this one-off is not easy, so that's not a fact. There's a, I'm a bit of a rebel, so here we go. There's a legal way for all residents in all counties in Alberta for skirting some of the restrictions in this bylaw, but I will leave that for council and the public to discover. I think my five minutes are probably up. I think my five minutes are probably up.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public wish, in attendance here, would like to come up and speak in favor of the application? Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, council and the public. I'm Bob Hagsma from between Rocky and Caroline, and I work with the land use bylaw all the time in, in my surveying business. I'm probably the most conversant for practical terms with it in the county here. And I believe what we're looking at today is the difference between the bylaw we're proposing and the existing one. And I can tell you right now that the existing one doesn't allow a person to do nearly what this proposed one will let you do by way of exclusion, by way of things that weren't in place at the time that bylaw was passed over 20 years ago. And this one allows people to do things. For instance, if you have a CRA parcel and you have a horse that you raised from a foal, you can't sell it under the old bylaw. You have to keep it forever. So this bylaw allows you to do that. It allows you, on a small scale, to raise animals and sell them. It allows you to raise, say, a market garden, vegetables and that sort of thing, and sell them where the current bylaw doesn't. There's many other instances like that, too. And I could go on and on, and I have, most of you know. And I think that over the past 18 or 20 months, I believe it was, that we've been meeting on this, because I'm a member of the PAC as well, that we've gone through it quite well. We've got comments from the public throughout with emails, with one-to-one interaction and that sort of thing. And it's changed. That's why we're at version six now. I'm still working with version four because it's got all my notes in it, but most of the last, changes in the last two versions are just cosmetic. But I, I noticed, like, there was a rap on the Western Star here, I called Cover of the Rolling Stone, but last Thursday, and I took issue with a few things on that. The one thing it did do was it brought to attention to the public this meeting, and there's, I'm sure, a number of people here that are here because of that, which is good. But there was some misinformation. It mentioned the three-foot gate or fence that you had...
No, it didn't.
Didn't it? What did it say? It said something about that.
That was the workshop notice, Bob.
Oh, was it? Oh, okay. I stand corrected.
We're not here to talk about that.
Okay. So anyway, the fences are removed from this new one. Technically, under the old one, you had to go with a development permit for a fence, although nobody did, and that sort of thing. But it was urging to delay the passing of this bylaw until the new council is here. And I would strongly suggest that we pass it here and now. It's got a clause in there that we have to revisit every year.
No!
Okay. My reason is...
Please, everyone gets their own respect for their five minutes.
My reasoning on this is, we have something that's about 95% there, in my opinion. And it's way more workable than what we have now. Now, let's say you have a house that you're selling, and you think that the new people might not like the color, or they might want to put a roof over the patio or something like that. Would you tear the whole house down just because you think that might happen? And I'd say, no. No, let the new council tweak this as they see fit, please. I need something that I can go to my clients and say, this is what you can and can't do. And this allows...
Government doesn't run our lives.
No, they don't. But the government is here to make sure that we have a community, and that's what this land use bylaw does.
One minute.
If, if there's no bylaw at all, then anybody can do whatever they want on their property, and no neighbors can do anything to stop it. This allows for orderly development of the community, and I would res, or would respectfully ask council to please pass this with maybe some minor amendments here. But let's do it now rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Just as a word of caution, this is supposed to be a very respectful and allow everyone their opportunity to have their say. So, although we are here under this, thank you for being quiet. Although we are here to be, raise our opinions and bring our concerns forward, it is important that we, as a community, understand that we have more in common here than we are different. And everyone has an opportunity to have our say. This is what this council is here for today. So, we've had two people come up and speak in favor of this LUB. Is there anyone else that would like to step forward and bring comments? We do have comments. I'm just checking over to Mike. Is there comments waiting in Rocky Mountain House? Okay, so there is one line. Okay. Please state your name.
Name, excuse me, my name is Ben Swanson. And to be truthful, if it was up to the discretion of my wife, I would not be speaking here today. However, I am here to speak in support of the draft LUB, and thank you to council for bringing it as far as you have. It's not easy. I have about four questions and points for council and the public to consider as we, as we move forward. First, how is this draft LUB document come to be where it is today? Almost two years ago, for the first time aware, I'm aware, council chose a new process and selected a public advisory committee to assist in the review and the draft of the LUB. That should be groundbreaking. That should be something we celebrate. The result of what we're talking today was formulated from a cons, consensus of council as a whole and those members of the PAC or the public advisory committee. Is there division within that? Absolutely, there always will be. But it was consensus. We are invited to multiple open houses throughout the county to bring forth questions and ask for opinions. Also, I have to remind myself that this draft also includes the newly amalgamated Hamlet of Caroline. Are we going to risk it sitting in limbo with no document to support its, its future? Secondly, is this draft an improvement on the existing 2001 LUB document? We just heard from a person who works with it every day that it is. I believe that over 24 years, much has changed in the community, and this current draft addresses past concerns and reflects more of our community today. The draft states that there will be a full annual review, something that hasn't happened in 24 years. This yearly review should, I would have hoped, appease those wanting a postponement, as it clearly states, the document will be revisited after the election. So what happens if this draft LUB is postponed? Council heard in the meetings, there are residents and businesses waiting for this council to approve this sixth draft, so they can develop their property. How long are they going to be expected to wait? Do we discard all the work and money that has just been spent? Start all over? Do we really think that a new council, when elected, will come back with a significantly changed document? Will they tweak it? Absolutely. But it will be very similar. I, too, would like to speak about the recent newspaper article, what its purpose was of that advertisement. If the purpose was to get people to attend and ask questions, then it was, was good. Got people talking. If it was to bring any clarity to the topics listed, I believe it wasn't successful, as all it did was add confusion. Many bold statements were made without any context. Did it drive a conversation? Yes, but it didn't bring clarity. In closing, the current LUB document, 2001, does not meet our community of today. Through annual document reviews, councils of the day can make changes accordingly, well into the future. As was stated, it is a living document. I do realize, as a resident, that developments do occur that may not always be what I'm in favor of, but may serve the best interest of the community as a whole. Pass draft six and let the new council work on the future updates 12 months from now. I, as a resident of this community, understand there will be changes that I'm not fully in support of, but are in the best interest of the community. That I can live with. Thanks, everybody, for listening.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in support of the LUB? Seeing none, I will turn over to the speaker online, please. Could you please identify yourself?
Is that me?
That would be you.
Good morning, council. My name is Ron Leif. I'm a resident of Clearwater County. Numerous people have made comment regarding the current LUB was passed in 2001. Just to give some context, I think it's important. 2001, we dealt with 9/11. Google was three years old, Amazon was three years old, and the internet was just starting to become commercialized. Here we are 24 years later, and I think it's important, not only is the land use bylaw for the purpose of regulating land use and setting out how development control occurs, but as been reflected by the previous two speakers, it also sends a message to the business community, both within the community and in the region, of how Clearwater County, what type of business it's open for. The Alberta Treasury Board and Finance released a projection with regard to where Alberta's population is going to be in 2050. And it's going to increase by about 2.5 million people, and that is going to be located predominantly in the metro Edmonton and metro Calgary area and along the Highway 2 corridor. Put another way is that rural Alberta is going to continue to represent less and less of the provincial economy. And so I think it's important, and I applaud the council for making the changes. So I'm in support of the land use bylaws it's currently presented, because of its modernization of the language, updating the development process, and recognizing some of the new economic factors that exist in Clearwater County and in Alberta. I believe that the alignment of the land use bylaw with the new MDP and council strategic plan is also a plus. The process was well advertised, it was thoughtful, it provided for numerous opportunity for the general, or for the general public to, to comment. And so for those reasons, I recommend that council move forward. A couple of concerns that I have, there's some suggestion that the support, or sorry, I support the inclusion of renewable energy as a provision in the land use bylaw, but I would suggest that there needs to be some kind of informative to recognize that the province has jurisdiction through the AER and AUC, and that the ability, again, going back to the comments about what was referenced in the Western Star, the suggestion that council is going to be able to protect agricultural land through the land use bylaw with regard to renewable energy, I think, is misstated. With regard to the suggestions that the land use bylaw not be adopted until after the fall election, again, I agree with both previous presenters, that that's going to create unnecessary complications for the new council, as well as unnecessary costs and additional staff time and consultant time. One of the other things that I would request that council include in the new draft is some type of formal statement of when the document is going to be reviewed. 24 years is too long, and in our technologically-driven society now, 24 years is the same, is, is far too long. So, to conclude, I encourage council to move forward and adopt the land use bylaw with whatever amendments it deems necessary. The document needs to support economic growth as well as manage the competing interests around land, and I thank council for your time. One final comment. I apologize that I'm not able to be there in Caroline. I have another appointment in Red Deer that I have to leave for here shortly. Otherwise, I would have preferred to have been there. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Mike, is there any other online?
Nobody has indicated at this point, but maybe if we just wait, like, maybe 10, 20 seconds, we'll get somebody.
Any members of the public who are on virtually and wishing to speak in favor of this bylaw? Could you please put up your hand or indicate that you would like to speak?
No indication.
No indication. So before moving on, I will ask Director Hager to, were there any written submissions in favor of the request?
Yes, Madam Chair, there were four in favor of the application. Just bear with me as I sort through my list of paperwork. First one, from Amanda Thompson. "I'm writing today in favor of the new land use bylaw. What currently is in place is not effectively working. Draft five, I think, is a good start to bringing the county up to date with how the land is being used. Waiting until after the election, as some have suggested, does not make sense. The county has to put in so much time, money, and resources into this project already. There has been extensive teamwork from the planning department, council, landowners. Understanding this bylaw is a living document is important. There will be kinks along the way, and until it is put into use, we may, or may not know what those are. The planning department at the county is more than competent to figure out how to approach those issues as they arise. I do hope you consider voting in favor of second and third reading." Second letter, Daryl Meisner. "The land use bylaw is a critical document in the regulation of development in the county and definitely needs to be updated from 2001 version to meet the expectations of county residents today. I urge council to approve the final reading of the land use bylaw. The annual review section, point 7.1.8 is probably not needed, but if it satisfies the residents to review it annually, I can live with that, and although it just needs, it just adds needlessly to the council's workload. A better solution would be to define the land use bylaw lifespan as consistent with the MDP lifespan. Finally, I feel the land use bylaw provides more clarity on business and residential developments in the county and into the future. Very important, as more people move to the large urban centers in Alberta, and we want to, and will want to move, set up business and do their recreation in Clearwater County. The land use bylaw must provide opportunity and vision into the future for all of these opportunities to occur." Next letter received, Courtney Jameson. "I appreciate the addition of guest house or secondary suite on acreages being a discretionary use, as well as the addition of CCANs being in approved use. I do still wish the land use bylaw draft included an easier approved provision for the second parcel out or third titles on a quarter section." That would be addressed under the municipal development plan. "The secondary suite or guest house on a parcel zone CR, CRA, to be approved use instead of a discretionary use was another suggestion, and thank you for all your efforts in reaching out to the community and excellent public engagement." Last letter received in favor was from Diane and Kelly Hall. "Good afternoon. In reviewing the land use bylaw, it seems the information on the first two pages of the Western Star is quite vague and briefly written to create anger and confusion amongst many Clearwater County residents. In section 3.2, where development permits are not required, yes, there are a lot of red marks on the page and many requirements, but the list is very long regarding the many circumstances in which it is not required to have a development permit. This is good news for landowners. Section 3.2D has a change in fence, gate, or wall height, and I feel 2 meters, 6.5 feet is plenty high enough. I don't see a problem with that. Section 6.8 penalties, or as it stated in the Western Star enforcement, I like how this is printed in green, noting exaggeration. I, for one, know how fair the county is with residents. We are truly appreciative. I can see that this, in this section, there would be a first, a conversation, then a first warning, along with a fine of $500 to $2,000. If the problem continued, there would be a second attempt to clarify and rectify the issue. If not, it would result in further fines. In extreme cases, third warnings, attempt to solve the issue, and unsuccessfully would result in further fines. Yes, it does state up to a $10,000 fine or jail time could be issued. I'm assuming this would be in the very rare instances and when someone's... I'm assuming this would be in the very rare instances, and when someone is trying to take us down on an issue they feel they're passionate about." Section 8.141, regarding objects prohibited and restricted in yards, asking for 100-foot distance from a public roadway seems reasonable. Too bad someone couldn't move the junkie camper out of the ditch along Highway 12. And Leslieville Junction, there are countless examples of this around the county. 8.14.2, unsightly objects could be moved out of sight or hidden. So addressing that. Section 8.1.4.3 of the land use bylaw, again, unsightly objects could be moved out of sight or hidden from the neighbors. I like that Section 8.162 and 8.167 was removed to allow more flexibility to landowners regarding landscaping. Section 8.15, building design, character, and appearance, this whole section sounds reasonable and on par with the building requirements of those within town and city limits. Why shouldn't the county have the same standards for our surrounding areas? It only makes sense to use materials, colors, and architectural designs to complement your surroundings, as well as those around you. This can be achieved with any budget, and honestly, I'm not sure why this expectation is questioned. If you were told to build a house in town, there are requirements to follow as well. This is not a new concept. Also, many of the complaints are coming from those who built barns years ago and painted them green, just saying, nobody is telling them to paint them a different color. Section 9.20.1, RV storage and temporary use, I like RVs are allowed, and it's reasonable to not allow permanent structures to be attached. This allows for quick removal in the case of emergency. Section 9.20.3, my question there is, could the timeframe be extended without a permit in circumstances where it's being used on private property for accommodation while building a house, living quarters, for work, et cetera? This seems to be a popular way of living in the past five years, with families transitioning due to financial reasons or changes within the family unit. I think that the allowable number of RVs on land is reasonable, seven per farm, four per CRA and CRA parcels. Who needs to store more than that unless you're operating a commercial storage facility? Any unlivable or unsightly RVs should be removed, disposed of, or stored out of sight, regardless how big the parcel is sitting on. 9.2.0, sorry, 9.20.7 is a reasonable requirement to obtain a development permit for an RV being used for staffing over 72 hours, 72 hours and less does not require a permit. Section 9.28, CCANS, basically, I understand that if zoned agricultural, there is no limit to the amount of CCANS you can have on your land, nor the color. CR and CRA allows one, and if you want more, simply obtain a permit. HR and LR districts are allowed one discretionary RV, sorry, CCAN. Place the CCAN preferably in an out-of-sight location, behind trees, some sort of barrier to complement the aesthetics of your surroundings. Do not place it in the front side yard in plain sight. If not placed on agricultural land, the CCAN shall be painted and complement the exterior buildings on the property or screened from the public by hiding behind the trees, et cetera. These requirements all seem very logical and fair. This draft is not stating the public can't have a CCAN on their property. It's offering fair compromises. There's my two cents. I hope you enjoy. That was the extent of the written submissions we received following the public hearing advertisement.
Thank you. So I'll make one last call. Is there anyone here in favor of the application, if they could step forward? Seeing none. We'll move on now. To anyone who is opposed to the application is invited to speak. So we will first go to those that are in attendance and wishing to speak in opposition of the bylaw. Please step up to the microphone, and I will time you, give you your five minutes, and I will give you your one-minute notification. If you have any comments in regards to opposition of this application, please step up to the microphone and state your name. Pardon me?
Do you think it's time for a break?
Oh, if, council, would you prefer a personal privilege break right at this point?
I was trying to get them back over the field.
Yeah.
I'm ready to sit here.
Yep. Council is ready to chug on, so. Any member of the public wishing to speak in opposition, please step up to the mic?
Hello, my name is Russell Barnett. I have been following the process all the way through, and I have more of a holistic comments on the current proposal. The combination of multiple zones into one zone is a high, the high-level issue that I have. There's lots of detail that I think will be addressed as it goes through, because as we know, it's a living document. And so the minute details and things like that, you know, can be taken care of through the regular process. So as a resident of Caroline, I currently have a property zoned R1, and the combination of R1, R2, and R3, and R4.
Sorry, Russell. Can you pull the mic?
The mic, I can't turn you off that much, so you have to be a little closer.
Okay.
People at the back won't hear.
How is this?
Better. Yeah. It's not about up here, it's about back there.
Yeah, no, I understand. Okay, so I'm sure, let me just catch up on that then. So my issue with the land use bylaws is not the minute level of details, because I feel those can be addressed as ongoing, as it is a living document. But fundamentally, when you combine multiple districts, like in Caroline, we have R1, R2, and R3, and R4. And if you look at the current zoning, how it's set up in Caroline, it's pretty obvious that they grew organically, and there was no sort of long-term plan. You've got a trailer here, so you can have a trailer beside you, and you can have a trailer, et cetera. And so the combination of all of those into Hamlet Residential is basically another term for blanket rezoning. And so as a resident, as a resident of Caroline, zoned R1, and this goes to, this goes for all people that have R-related properties in Caroline. So if changing that to Hamlet Residential changes the intent of the original zoning, so R1 was zoned specifically for single-family dwellings, right? So if we change that to Hamlet Residential, then without additional review, remember, this is so what is now currently permitted, so nobody needs to come to council or anything else like that. So without additional review in the land use proposed HR, single detached dwellings, that conforms to R1. Duplexes, that was never part of R1. Multi-unit residential, up to four units, that was never part of R1. So, and it goes on. And then in the discretionary side of Hamlet Residential, underneath the discretionary side is pretty much everything you can think of, as long as it gets approved. So there's a couple of reasons for this. There are empty lots in Caroline, and people have bought properties there with the expectation that their neighbors are going to be like them, because they've seen that zoning and they bought their property. So how is council going to protect the original intent of those properties so that we don't have an infill with four, or five, or six units in them? Not that Caroline infrastructure could take that, but we need to be able to control what's existing there. So not only did I bring this up in a letter to you folks on Sunday, but I also brought forth a solution to you that I emailed out yesterday, the day before. And so my recommendation is within, and certainly within Caroline, that we have subsets. And so you can combine the new, net new, that's coming from the current version of the land use bylaw. You can bring forth those, but you need to keep the original intent, that this is single-family, this is multi-unit, et cetera. And so that, in that way, you have subsets. You would have HR as a zone, and then you would have HR dash R1, if you want, R2, R3, and R4. And that way, you're protecting the original intent of the zoning, and you're protecting the expectations of people that have bought their property, whether it's R2, R1, or whatever. You're protecting that, plus, and you're adding four zones. And let's face it, people, the county wants to collapse all of the zones to make it more efficient and have everything consistent across the county. And let's face it, if, when you apply to be part of planning, they want to know how much OCD you have, because that's why you're in planning. And so the fact that adding four subsets is not a big issue. Neither, we're 23 now, so we have 23 plus four subsets. I don't know how Hamlet Residential affects others, but I know in Caroline, it's an issue. One other comment I would ask, one minute left. In the document, it is a subset to what's in the MGA, the Municipal Government Act. We showed Section 640 up here today. 643 is what's relevant. So 643 overrides or provides guidelines to all of the residents as to what is possible in the transition. So if you are compliant now, no matter what is brought in in the future, you remain compliant, no matter what council says, no matter what the land use bylaw says, no matter what the enforcement process says. The MGA overrules all of that. And my last comment on that, just because solar is not dear to my heart, I would like to thank you for writing the letter to the AUC. I have been working hard in rural Alberta. Other councils have followed your lead, and it is making a difference. In the last three months, we've had another four projects put on hold. Thank you very much.
Now invite any member of the public wishing to speak in opposition to please step up
Hello, my name is Pat Butler. I'm a resident of Division 7. Yes, the rap got a lot of attention. That's what it was designed for, to make people aware. How many people were aware of the county advertising? Quite a difference in size. That made people aware. We've had lots of comments. I have, other members of taxpayers have. They didn't know, because people are apathetic about a lot of government stuff. They weren't aware of this revision of the land use bylaw. So we need to find better ways of communicating to the public. That's what, you know, just this morning, I had a person tell me that last night, they were at supper with their family, and they saw the Western Star rap. What's this all about? Do you mean we can't do this? So some heads up that we need to, we need to be more user-friendly. My comments, other than that, what's, I'd like to know what the rush is. I know there's been several people speaking in favor already. The money's not wasted. It gives the general public more time to study this. That 227-page document, you don't read it through it in an afternoon, unless you're a speed reader. You know, what is the rush? Are you thinking you might not be re-elected if you're wanting to run again? And you want... Division 2 has no representation at the moment. I know Councillor Melhaff has been covering, as have others of you, but still, they have no representation on council. And how, I would like to ask, how is this document user-friendly? I don't care whether it's the paper copy or whether it's online, and with connectivity issues in the county, that's not real great. I have looked, and I've mentioned it to yous before, Willow Creek has a much bigger document. It's online as well, but everything is there. Their index tells you the page to go to. You go to it. Their forms are there for the permit applications. Why don't we have, if we're going to do this up, why don't we have it so we can download those applications and fill them out, or fill them out online? And half of it's done before we go into planning. Other people have asked me why we're using a consultant. This has been brought up before. Why isn't council and planning and something like your PAC Advisory Committee working on this? And it's geared specifically, it doesn't have urban undertones. AHS this morning, a lot of urban undertones. This is rural Alberta. Yes, we're doing business, but... And it doesn't appear that council really, here's what we're trying to say at times. The difference, you know, you publish your what-we've-heard remarks. You do not record at those public sessions. You have somebody like Dustin recording, or someone else. That's subjective. He's writing down what he thinks he's hearing. With all the technology you have, you should have recording at these public sessions. So. And councilors, you were elected by your constituents to represent them. When you get to council, is it just like the provincial and the federal governments? We don't have, you don't have a party whip? But do you really listen to what your residents are telling you? Or do you go on? That needs to be taken into consideration. Do you get whipped into line, or are you standing up for your constituents? Yes, it costs us money to run raps on the Western Star, but it obviously gets people out to your sessions. Your advertising isn't getting people there the same way. I have a personal beef with the guest house requirements and not being able to have a cooking facility. If I have, am I finished?
I'll let you wrap up your last comment. How's that?
Thank you. I believe if you have family that comes from afar to visit, and you live on a farm, you have daily chores that have to happen at certain times, your feeding programs, whatever. There's chores involved. Maybe your guests, because they're urban and they're on holidays, don't want to get up and have breakfast when you roll it out. Why can't they have the cooking facilities in that guest house? They're relaxing and cook what they want, when they want. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi. I'm Tara LaPage, and it's freaky to talk into this.
It's more for the people at the back of the room.
I understand. I just, for my own hearing my voice, it's weird. I just basically want to say, I am Tara LaPage Fielding. I have lived in Clearwater County for nine years, and I do not want an HOA in my world, and it feels like this is trying to be an HOA, where they are trying to tell us what to do. But as a very nervous speaker, I just want to specifically say that the lady in white at the very start had very good points, a lot that I personally agree with. And the fact that she was put in the "for" category instead of against category, I'm not okay with. And I also believe that there's a lot of people in this crowd who don't want to speak simply because they are shy like myself. And I would like to do a raise a hands for those who agree with the lady in white, and I would like it put on public record how many people agree with what she said, because we do not want AHS, and we do not want an HOA. So raise a hands for those who agree with her. Can we count this and put this on public record? Is that allowed?
Yes.
I look to, I look to...
It is the majority. Thank you for listening to my nurse.
I believe when you signed in, I...
It was just our names.
It was just your name. That's fair.
Just our names.
Nope.
But we will leave with a vote. If you want us to put it on a piece of paper, I'm sure everyone in this room is more than willing to do that.
Yeah, no, I just thought not everybody's going to stay. So anyways, okay, my, my bad. I apologize. I didn't realize that that was not included, so. Thank you for stepping up.
I'll now ask if there's anyone else in opposition. Please step up. Thank you. Please adjust the mic accordingly.
Hi. My name is Sander Buck, and my first question is, there's a vast world of difference between a community and agriculture and rural. World's a difference. A community is when you, a hamlet, a little town, a city. Yes, you want community. You want to have things that are together. But people who live rurally, we don't think like that. I'm sorry. You know, you want to live in a little hamlet or a town like Red Deer or wherever, or Erdry. To me, go ahead. That's all your woke agenda. Have it. I don't want it. Why the hell do you think I live out here for? That is what I agree with, and I agree with the First Lady, the lady in white. We all think alike, so. Bye, guys.
I'm Deborah Martins, landowner. I'm reading a letter that my daughter sent in. She says, "Dear Reeves and Member of Council, I'm writing to provide my formal submission regarding the proposed draft and land use by law, version 5 dated June 18, 2025. As a resident of Clearwater County, I appreciate the county's effort, efforts to modernize the Lub and acknowledge the comprehensive work undertaken by administration and council. However, I would like to raise several concerns about areas that must result in unintended consequences, unfairness, reduced public transparency, if not carefully addressed prior to final adoption. Number one, discretion and direct control DC and districts. Several new direct control districts, example DC, RE-DC-CS, DC-CC, allow council administration to approve development without clear, objective criteria. These approvals are not appealed to the subdivision and development appeal board, concentrating on power without external oversight. Request, please consider including decision-making, criteria, or safeguards for transparency in DC zones. Number two, broad variance powers, Section 3.7. The variance provisions allow the development authority to approve variance based on subject, working like dues, not unduly interfere. This could result in consistent decisions or undue influence. Request, consider narrowing the language and require written rationale for any variance in approvals. Number three, short-term rental regulations, 9.3. This section outlines time limits for short-term rentals, but lack of clear, objective criteria for approval, denial, or renewal. This opens a possibility for uneven real in reinforcement. Request, add a criteria or policies for how STR applications will be evaluated and renewed. Number four, lack of guaranteed public access to application files. Nor in the draft guarantees public access to the details of rezoning or development permit, applications prior to hearing. Request, consider adding a clause to require administration to make application files rational, available to the public prior to council consideration. Number five, transparency and development, development conditions. Section 3.6 allows the development authority to impose and, and conditions deemedly necessary without criteria or disclosure requirements. This could, could be used inconsistently. Request, require conditions to be publicly documented with reasoning. Summary, I support Clearwater County's goals of aligning the Lub with modern needs, but urge the counter, I'm trying my mouth, urge, urge the council consider tightening these areas to protect landlords from unintendedly or equitable impacts. Reasonable oversight, written justification, and, and fair opportunities are essential pillars of good land use governance. Respectfully, I respectfully request that these issues be addressed before second and third reading of the bylaw. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the input. Sincerely, Cassidy Martins, my daughter." Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, folks. Greg Summers, resident of Clearwater County. Hey, we've got a lot of people taking off here, so I just wanted to brush on a couple of things. There's approximately 150 people seated and people standing. I took a day off work to be here. So did several other people. This is the second hearing we've been to. We've taken a day off work. We're passionate about this. If everybody gets five minutes to speak in favor or opposed, we don't have enough time in this day to hear everybody's talk here. There's no way of knowing that who's opposed and who's not unless somebody starts raising something about it, all right? So I bought my land to farm. I'm going to continue to try and grow farming. There's a lot of things that make it difficult, pricing and everything else, and this is kind of getting close to adding up to that list, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not in favor of it. So because we don't have time to listen to everybody and everybody's leaving here, I'm just going to ask everybody that's opposed to stand up. It doesn't need to be a recorded vote.
Can I just say something? I don't think, I, I don't think...
I'm getting there.
No, I don't think that they will count that.
They don't have to.
Excuse me, Greg has the floor at this point in time. You will be asked to come up at your, at your time. This is Greg's time is going...
I'll get back to it here. Pardon that.
Thank you.
All right, now, everybody that's in favor, please stand. That's, that's, that's freedom, folks, okay? That's freedom. That's what we're allowed to do. So I hope council recognizes this, all right? It doesn't have to be recorded. They've seen it. They're the ones making the votes. They know what's going on here. We voted them in place, folks. So the other thing I want to say is, I really think that this is getting pushed a little quick. You don't have time to review it proper, well, I shouldn't say that, I'm assuming. I think more time is required to review it properly and take everybody's considerations into, into a piece. You can't just push through and push through and push through. And it is a live document, yes. I've been in positions where we review bylaws. Folks, a several hundred pound, or several hundred-page bylaw is not going to get reviewed fully. What's going to happen in the future is somebody's going to come in and say, "I don't like Section 8.5.6." That's going to get reviewed. If that does not make a change, it doesn't get changed. The whole bylaw is not going to get reviewed yearly, okay? So you can tell us that that's going to happen, but we know it's not. Everybody's got lots of things to do in their life, as well as you folks, too. So to sit down and review 200 and some pages in an evening or three evenings for first, second, and third reading isn't going to happen. It's going to be the fine-tuned points on what us as the public bring forward as change. Well, as for this room, this public has brought forth, forth request of change. So my request is that we table it instead of pushing it through. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been taking notes as I'm going along here. I didn't intend to speak, but I can't keep my yap shut. If you take a look around here...
Your name, please?
Oh, sorry, Penny Judson. I live in Caroline. I've been here for three and a half years, so I'm fairly new. I came up here after I early retired due to the COVID bullshit, and excuse my language. I came here to live in a peaceful community and to support our rural rednecks. I'm one of them. And my concern is, if you look in the room today, majority of people here are over 50 years old, okay? So these are people that have lived in the community a long time. They are looking, most of these farmers, unfortunately, will probably end up selling their properties, and these properties will be bought by big corporations, and we will have no choice anymore. So my big concern is, from the top down, I don't care what you guys think as far as, and I shouldn't say that, sorry. My concern is, a lot of this stuff is coming from the top down. We know we've got the WEF going after everything, the UN, the WHO just passed that pandemic treaty, and Canada was raid up their butts. So my concern is the fact that these farms are going to be sold off eventually, and we're in big trouble. So you guys as a council, I know that you have certain restrictions that you have to stand by, which come from the top down, and you guys are here to stand up for us, okay? My concern is, I have two grandchildren. I have a son and his wife in the city. They make very good money, but they're still struggling. And what is happening now is they are trying to get rid of everybody out of these small communities, so they go to the big centers so they can be monitored and reprimanded So anything that you do with these bylaws is going to affect everybody, and as far as I'm concerned, these bylaws are funneling towards more and more restriction and putting more nooses around everybody's necks. The goals of our government is to make things more difficult for these rural communities, to bring the population into centers to be monitored. And I, I am appalled by what is happening in our areas. So I know some of you are farmers. Most of you don't live in, in these centers. Please take a look personally at what is going on here, and I want you to fight for us, not the Crown, not Daniel Smith, not whoever. You fight for us. Do not take an oath to the Crown. Your oath is to the people here that are taxpaying communities, so please think on that accordingly. Thank you.
My name is Brenda Barker, and I'm a resident of Clearwater County. I am against the, it's far too long, far too onerous. I've said it before. Now I'm on record as saying it. And I just want to say that the people that are against it, you have to come up to the mic. You have to say, "I'm against it," or you will not be counted. I can guarantee you that, okay? So if you're against it, make a line, state your name, say, "I'm against it." You don't have to speak for five minutes. And if you're for it, stand in line and tell them if you're for it, or else you will not be counted. Even though you're here today and you've made the ruckus, you will not be counted unless you come to the mic.
I'm Marlene Bratberg from Withrow, and I hate this new land use bylaw. I am against it.
You're, do you have a presentation that you'd like to make?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
I'm going to take five minutes. I'm a private, I'm a private attorney. I'm a landowner, and a number of years ago, I proved, oh, first of all...
You're, so we'll let you have your five minutes. So are you directing your comments to council? Because this is what...
To every, to everybody. The majority of the people are in this direction.
I understand that. I understand.
All right.
Okay, so just please state your name.
I did.
I didn't hear it. Sorry.
My name is Daniel Losnick. I'm a landowner. I'm a private attorney. The 200-page proposal is nothing more than fluff and stuff. The Tax Act is nothing more than fluff and stuff. If you look up the definition of act, Shakespeare said it best. "We are all actors, and the world is our stage." A number of years ago, the IRS and the CRA, which are the same agency, stole my wealth. And because my background is science, I researched for eight months, read thousands of Supreme Court decisions proving income tax is at best voluntary. It is not a law. The government cannot take you to court over a law that does not exist. My point being, bylaws, rules, codes are not laws. The development permits imposed by AHS, oh, by the way, Alberta Health is run by two lawyers from the Alberta Law Society. This is why a sniveling civil servant government official could never put that verbiage on paper, because they wouldn't understand what they wrote themselves. Tax is not a law. Again, a tax act is not a law. The Municipal Government Act is not a law. It is totally unenforceable. Our lives do not operate under any government agenda, nor should we pay the government, who, oh, by the way, is bankrupt and never paid back the foreign creditors, the fruits of our work and labor, because they are bankrupt. They created UIC and CPP, and now it's morphed into tax on the air we breathe and the water we drink. Our land that we own, that we settled, we own the elodium. We own the surface, and we own the air, as God intended, not man. I'm going to finish by saying something, and it's directed to the Reeve and the councillors. Should the Reeve and the councillors of this board approve this ridiculous land use bylaw or demand further permits regarding C cans and where we can build an outhouse, they will be served a document that they will need to defend, and I will be the one who will serve it upon them, and they will be given 20 days to respond.
You have one minute left.
Perfect. Should they not reply or defend? A third-party enforcement agency known as the RCMP will come and do whatever they do to get the damages that will be assessed at 1.8 million US upon them precedent-setting case that they will have to pay for. They need to defend a lie. I kind of doubt they'll be able to do that. Should they pass this ridiculous 200-page proposal of junk? Thank you for your time.
My name's Wade Porter. I live in Clearwater County, and I'm a little upset at this hamlet and all this other, all sounding like everybody's got to match what this towns and cities and all that are. We're in the country. If I want to build a second house, considering the taxes I'm paying, which is almost matching a city, and what do I get for it? A poorly graded road, and I have to pick up, take my garb- A poorly graded road. And I have to pick up, take my garbage recycling and all that to the transfer station while in the city, they come and get it. So why am I paying huge taxes? And I can't build what I want. I have to, oh, if you build over this, you gotta get a permit. And when you do this, you gotta get a permit. I'm paying that in taxes. You guys want to put permits? You've already collected the money on my taxes. I think it's about time you guys start acting like councilors, looking at what we do and matching your bylaws and other planning stuff to what we do, the way we do it. You're not here to tell us what to do. You're here to do what we tell you to do. Thank you.
Just pull the mic over, please.
Morning.
Pull the mic over to your mouth, please, so we can hear. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ronald Gordon.
Sorry, I can't hear you. There's other people speaking.
My name is Ronald Gordon.
Okay.
And my family name is Andress. And I'd like to address all counties and Clearwater County, the corporation that's presenting itself here, that you're putting tyranny on display here. And this is quite blatant in the fact that the people's right to trial is being violated by what you're doing. And if you're going to fine people and tell people that they broke your rules, your laws, then there should be a trial involved there to assess the fact of your being guilty or not guilty. Whereas you're just fining people and you're assuming guilt. And you're calling people guilty and you're gonna damn well pay that fine with no trial. So I believe this is a violation of many rights, especially in a country where people value process. But where is the process? Is your law actually valid? If it went to trial, that could be questioned. Also, you can make a million, you can make a million laws, and as long as you're handing out fines and not going through the process, it's all fine and dandy. But if you had to face a challenge in court over every time you did that, I think there'd be a lot less fines handed out for every silly little thing. So I believe a class-action lawsuit for the right to trial would be in order for all counties. And the right to trial is recognized globally. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Morning.
Hello, councilors. Metcalf, I think, is my ward. Never really paid attention to that before. Lisa Hendrickson bottom. I'm below my husband's name on the tax file. I'm a female. Yeah. So my husband is Murray Johnston. He is not here due to mobility issues. I'm here, Lisa Hendrickson, married to him. We got a dog. We got everything you don't want. And I want to keep it. And it might look ugly to somebody from Ontario, but it's not ugly to me. It's taken years to get that. I just want to say that I oppose this amendment of the land use bylaws. And we should slow things down a bit. Slow things down and give us some time. Let's have, set it up for the election to be later and allow people to read this language. Maybe if you made TikTok videos of all the laws that you're proposing, it would be taken not anymore positively, but it would at least be sharing and communicating to the public. Thank you for your representation. I expect you to do a job because I can't even get a job here. I have to go to another county to find a job. So we've lost much industry. Everything that I came here since 94 is suspended. Valves are closed. The flow is not there. Renewable is unsightly. It's dangerous to our wildlife. It does not provide jobs. Everybody does it from a remote control room.
30 seconds?
30 seconds. Love y'all. But not really.
Hello, I'm Rodney Peterson. I just moved here in this community in 2019. Sold my business in Olson, moved out here to God's country.
Speak closer to the mic, please.
You know, the way I'm looking at this, the gentleman said, "Well, paying taxes are voluntary." Well, maybe if you guys go through with this bullshit, maybe we just shouldn't pay our taxes. Thank you.
You'll have to adjust the mic. Just pull it down, please. There you go.
Hi, I'm Ruth Zulgovy and I'm a Clearwater County resident. I moved out of town so I did not have to be dictated to how I wanted my property to be. If I wanted dictation, I'd live in a condo, HOA, or in a friggin' city. I oppose this, as everybody else here does. Thank you.
My name is Gary Frick. I live in Clearwater County. I'm retired and I have a small piece of property. And I love to do what I want to do on my property, and if I can't do it, I'm moving back to Nova Scotia where I got beautiful 125 bays of property.
My name is Kathy Taylor. I live in the Clearwater County, and I am opposed to this. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Violet Blowers, and I'm sure you all recognize me from a couple days ago. We are dealing with this right beside us. The proposal to change bylaws and stuff, and it's strongly affecting us and all these people. And what's trying to be brought in is city stuff that doesn't fit in with the rural community. And that needs to be looked at because there's just gonna be so much chaos caused by the stuff that's being done right now that's gonna affect many people mentally, physically. There's gonna be a lot of harm done to people. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rosemary Evans, and I even brought my title. I own my quarter where I live. So, and I don't know why you guys can tell me what I can build on it. I gotta, it doesn't make any sense. So if you wanted to see my title, I could show it to you. I brought it. Anybody wants to see it? Well, anyway, I do have it here. So if anybody wants to, they sure can. And I should be able to do. The thing is, right now, they're working on my road, Clearwater County. They come and they put a fence. They took my fence out, took some more of my quarter. And when I asked them, it was "the right of way" is what they told me. I let it go. Now they're digging up everything. I know you gotta improve the road. You gotta put new culverts in. I get it. But nobody explained to me why they dug up all the ditches. Now the road is terrible, can barely, especially when it rains. Nobody works when it rains. My husband's car is really, really low. Nobody cared. So I don't get it. But anyway, like I said, if somebody wants to see, I own my quarter, not you guys. Well, the Clearwater County, anyway. Oh, and I do want to say, happy birthday, Jordy! Anyway, have a good day. Bye.
Hello, I'm a Clearwater County resident. My name's Breann Powell. I just want it to be known that I'm opposed. I won't speak anymore. The last time I was up at this mic, I was ignored. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jason Letwin from Leslieville area, Clearwater County. And I'm opposed to renewable energy, especially solar farms. Because first of all, they're not farms. They just take up farmland. And also, it's like we are being punished by Canada here in Alberta, as well as the county, or especially Alberta. Alberta has approximately 14,000 acres of solar farms right now. Ontario has 1,800 acres. These are proposed. And if you look in the backside, when it comes to reclamation and that, the companies that are putting these solar farms in, there might be one company for two solar farms, maximum. There's multiple companies. So I don't know if they're just laundering their names or what they're doing. Because when it comes to reclamation, cleanup time, not good. We need food, shelter, and clothing. Starts with agriculture. That's what we need first. Agriculture. So I'm opposed to this. Thank you very much for your time.
Hello, Lauren Humphrey. I'm a longtime resident of Clearwater County. And I've talked to a lot of people in our county, and I continue to talk to them when I run into them. And I'm not getting any kind of indication that people are looking to turn our county into Laduke County or Erdre County, any of those large counties that are surrounding the cities. Everybody I talk to is more interested in having a small rural area, that rural living, rural lifestyle. So I am opposed to this, and I'm opposed to you pushing it through. I think it needs to be looked at in depth and with the thought in mind that we don't want, when I say "we," I'm speaking for the majority, I think, we don't want a city atmosphere in our small-town, small-rural community. I think there's a lot of people would like to see it remain that way. It's kind of, we're kind of the last county standing. What's next? You know, we just turn into a metropolis. I don't think that's what we want. So I am opposed.
Good day, everyone. My name is Patty Sar, and I'm a 10-year resident of Clearwater County, now living in the beautiful little hamlet of Caroline. I am up here because I am opposed to the land use bylaw. 224, I think it is, pages. And how much was paid to have the consultant from Calgary to do this on a computer program, whereas someone else had suggested it could be counsel. We voted you in and all of the people you have chosen to help you. It could be a lot shorter, keep it very simple for people who live and reside in this county. I also don't like the reference to wards that goes back to serfdom. We should get rid of that, and I don't know why we can't. Go back to division, even that's divisive. I speak to a few people. Carrie Bailey spoke at the start, and she talks about natural law, God's law. The gentleman, Daniel Lozenick, spoke about income taxes. On the first page of the Income Tax Act, it says that income tax is voluntary. Income tax was created to pay for the war. You guys have to have a read. It's a good, long package. Back into taxes, if this got put through by you guys, what say would happen if 80 to 90% of county residents refused to pay their taxes? Because property taxes are not lawful. We are not supposed to pay income taxes or property taxes. Under God's law, common law, so long as we are not harming, causing harm to any man, woman, land, child, boy, or girl, why can't we do what we want? So long as you're not abusive and you're not flamboyant and you don't have a bunch of garbage that everybody can see? Yes, like clean up your trash, like be responsible, live responsibly, and love your neighbor as you are meant to love yourself because we are all created in the image. If no one believes in God, we are all divine, and let's keep it that way. Let's keep this pristine God's country divine. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maureen Gao-Zelmer, and I moved here to Caroline. I was a longtime resident of Dixon, so just next county over. But I've been here for, I don't know, three years, I guess. But I have loved this place for many, many years, coming through here, camping, stopping. I love this country. And I've got to tell you, I'm sick and tired of having to fight all you guys. We've been fighting almost three years against that bloody solar project. And what makes me sick is that all that is is a boondoggle for those guys getting rich, trading their credits on the stock market. That's all it is. Now we gotta fight, now we gotta fight for our way of life, our country way of life. I'd like to know which one of you guys is taking everybody's name down? Who's writing the names down that are standing here and saying, "I'm against the solar project"? Is there someone writing the names down?
Yeah.
You are? Thank you, Jordan. Thank you. Thank you. Jenny? Thank you. Okay, so I just want you to know, I am dead-set against this and against the solar project. It's not a firm. And I want people to stand up and fight with us and for us. Oh, and there's an APP meeting here on the 11th from 6:00 to 9:00. Be here.
Hello, my name's David Enz. I am a resident of Clearwater County. I own a quarter section west of Caroline. I am one of the 117 property owners in Clearwater County that are living on property that do not have what is considered legal access. I do not have a road to my property. I do not have anybody grading my roads. I have nobody helping me look after any of it out there. There's 15 kilometers of roads to get to my property, and I am solely responsible for making access to my house. I don't think this is right. I am also not very happy with the new land use bylaws. Everything in them is going against allowing people like myself any kind of development on our property. Something needs to change. We have, again, 117 properties in Clearwater County that could be developed, but they're not allowed to be developed because Clearwater County uses roads to limit what we are allowed to do. That needs to change. I have currently a development permit sitting in limbo with Clearwater County. It's been there for several years. I was told at the time we would put it in limbo and we would approach the Alberta government and make up something that we could do to deal with my current road access. Nothing has changed. I still have no, anything from the government. When I approach my MLA, Jason Nixon, he basically washed his hands of it. When I've talked to my counselor, he says there's nothing he can do. When I've talked to council as a whole, nothing can be done. That has to change. You guys need to fix these roads up. Everybody says, "Well, fix your own road." Well, there's 15 kilometers of it that I can't fix because it's under an LOC to Taca and Buena Vista. That's what I have to say. Thanks for your time.
Hi, I'm a resident of Clearwater County. My name is Raymond Graham. I'm very opposed to the fact that every thing you want to do on a, on a, I have a quarter section, you can't, what the neighbors think they see is not really, shouldn't have no concern, not that I've tried to make a mess or anything, but dictating where I can put C cans, how I can put them up, whether I can stack them, is none of your business. If I want, there's, there's no bylaw per se against putting sheds up, and what I call a C can of shed, as far as I'm concerned, so it should make no difference what I use for sheds, or what I do on my property. And what the neighbors think is immaterial. Second thing is, I don't have a problem with it now, but over the last few years, there's been constant problems with people moving in and then bitching because of small farms, they stink or make a noise or whatever. And they moved into a rural community with existing infrastructure and then might complain about it. So as far as the county dictating what people do on their, on their property, rural properties especially, and as far as bylaws for towns, villages, they cannot be lumped in to one rural, the rural is one, and villages not have to be looked at in totally different pros. So that's what I'm, my.
Hi, my name is Miles Low. I live in the Clearwater County. I agree with a lot of what's been said here today, but I have one question for you. I lived in Clearwater County on the Wall Street Road for 10 years from 2005 to 2015. Did many improvements to my property at the time. My taxes virtually did not go up in 10 years. I moved back to Clearwater County three years ago. I've cleaned up my property. I've made no improvements to it. Well, put a new roof on my house because of a hailstorm. And my taxes have gone up $1,000 in the last three years. I doubted everybody. I said, you want to live in a beautiful place where the councillors, that's, I'm going, my, my 10 years ago, when I lived here for 10 years. Everybody was great. They cleaned my road. I couldn't have been happier. I said it was the most beautiful county to live in. Now I come back and buy a property here again. Then, three years and almost $1,000? No, I'm pretty disgusted.
All due respect, my name is Judy Street. I've lived in Clearwater County for over 50 years. At this point, I don't have a lot of complaints, except I believe that Alberta Healthcare should keep her nose out of our business. I have a lot of, I have a lot of experience with this COVID bullshit. And I, I believe it needs to not be a factor in this, and I'm opposed to this. And that's my biggest bitch about this. Thank you.
Good day. My name's Bruce Charles of the Morel family. Caroline's been, what, over 100 years old. Because of the most incompetent council in history of Caroline, now they're calling it a hamlet. Well, I don't consent to that. It's still a village of Caroline, as far as I'm concerned, and I oppose this strongly. Thank you.
Mary Ann, can I just ask if the ones behind you just have a quick few minutes? And I know you have a 10-minute presentation, do you not?
Well, it's fine. Yeah, they can go. I, I know all the. I'm pretty well the full five minutes.
Are you the full five? Okay, okay. Does anyone, I just, just if they're going to be, that's fine.
Hi, my name's Ron Schultz. I'm a resident of Clearwater County for the last 45 years or so. I was involved in many of the early parts of this discussion before public was kind of denied access to it. And one of the things that was brought to my attention at that time was that anything that wasn't in the land use bylaw was illegal. And that really bothers me. And that was brought to everybody's attention. I asked for clarification, and they clarified that if, if we haven't thought of it, it's because it's not allowed. And I think that's terrible. And I think that if it hasn't been clarified in the new draft, it should be, because if it doesn't say in there, and this is just my example, I don't know if it does, that I can't own three motorcycles, that does not make it illegal. I mean, so, just because we can't think of it, and then have it wide open so that down the road, somebody can come back and say, oops, that's not in the book, so you have to not be able to do that. So definitely would like some clarification around that discussion. And there was parts that were talked about with taxes, and I don't know if the tax section of this comes in, but I always felt when you do improvements, and especially if you're following the guidelines, people should be rewarded for that. If you build a new house, you're probably employing local people. You should get rewarded for that. For the people that are living in rundown facilities and stuff like that, their taxes are lower because their property value is down. None of that, and it brings down everybody else's property. So people that invest money into the community should get a reward in a tax break for the sort of thing. Anyway, that's my two cents. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Jolynn Bradshaw. And I know you guys work hard. I watch you. I, I know that. And I, I want to say that I appreciate that, you guys. You don't have an easy job. I completely agree with all the against AHS telling us what to do, but that's really not what I need to register my vote for right now. I'm just speaking in opposed to passing the bylaws it is. To tell me that it's nothing new, and it's no more oppressive than the old one, really doesn't do my heart much good. I, I'm not for regulating people on their property. We all should live by the do no harm. Being kind to our neighbors should be first, and restrictions isn't the way to do that, in my opinion. So thank you for being here and for everyone else who came out today.
My name is Debbie Howe.
Deb, can you pull up the mic right to your mouth? Yeah, perfect.
Down? There we go. My name is Debbie Howe. I was born, raised, and have lived in Clearwater County most of my life. I'm opposed to council passing second and third reading for reasons too numerous to mention in the few minutes I have. I will say I've been counting, and we are now at 32 to 8, 32 opposed, 8 in favor. I would like to thank everyone behind me, even though half of them now left, and it's not even noon, whether you have been in favor or opposed for giving of your own time to be here. Many of us have given our own time to read the LUB draft and provide written feedback with our concerns, as well as giving of our own time to attend one or more of the open houses held in May, most of which appears to have fallen on deaf ears with the majority of council, administration, and PAC. Unfortunately, I believe I have wasted more of my valuable time by attending this public open house to have my say, as the say of the majority of we the people will once again fall on deaf ears, as with the MDP in 2023. Public open house, public hearings, only an illusion, so we the people think we have a say. I understand the need for regulations and varying regulations throughout the different districts, and specifically when people live in closer proximity or with industry. However, this LUB draft is micromanaging and controlling almost every aspect of what a landowner can and cannot do on their property in all districts. The 2020, the 2025 LUB draft is neither easy to read or user-friendly. It is long, complicated, and many sections are very confusing with mixed information. There are double definitions, as in the word permitted, excessive and unnecessary definitions of words that my seven-year-old grandson knows, and missing definitions that should be included but are not, such as strict liability offense. It was very clear in my written concerns, and at all three of the public open houses I attended, that all legal terms must be included, as 99.9% of the people are not versed in legal ease, but do know what a church, cemetery, airport, zoo, basement, community hall, et cetera, et cetera, are. Under the offenses section, it states, 6.7.2, all offenses created under the bylaw shall be interpreted to be strict liability offenses. For the majority who don't know what a strict liability offense is, it is a criminal charge. It appears that the tactic is intimidation and fear to force landowners to comply with controlling and overreaching bylaws that in no way would affect another landowner or their property. In section 6.7 offenses, the first offense states, any person who violates or contravenes or causes or allows a contravention of any provision of this land use bylaw. I would need at least an hour to list the provisions that would not in any way unduly interfere with the amenities of a neighbor or the neighborhood, or materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of a neighboring parcel of land, but rather are controlling and government overreach as to what we can and cannot do on our property. One example in the same section of offenses, 6.7.1, operates a business without a business permit. Your definition being, proof of one transaction or advertisement is sufficient to establish that a business is engaged in or operates the business is guilty of an offense and is liable upon submiring conviction to a fine in the amount specified in the bylaw. Meaning, if we advertise anything for sale, because it is advertising, eggs, garden, vegetables, or berries, hay, quad, motorhome, et cetera, we will require a business development permit. One transaction or advertisement does not constitute a business, but this document has made it so, because that's how it reads. This is controlling government overreach. Section 3.2, development not requiring a permit is so very confusing, as it also includes developments that do require a permit. No common sense. The concerns from us opposed are numerous and varied throughout the entire LUB draft. Now six, I'm going on five. The silent majority should not be considered as in favor, as has happened in the past. Most of the silent majority don't even know that the LUB rewrite is happening, or what it is, or what an MDP is, or even what division or who their councillor is. And just if I got a few seconds, I'm just going to add a comment here to other ones that were made, because most people don't know. The councillors have made their oath to the office of Division 2, 4, 7, whatever it is, meaning they have made their oath, you have made your oath, to the corporation of Clearwater County, not we the people. Another deception and lie to us.
Hello again. So Carrie Bailey again, and I just want to say thank you for your service. And Daryl, I think we grew up together in the trailer court. Is that you? Okay, different Daryl, sorry. Take that back. So I just want to say that I want to put it on the record that I am opposed to the, whatever this is called, as it stands. I'm opposed as it stands, okay? And what I want to say is, you guys, I'm, I'm about us as human beings, and I know every single one of you, I could probably have a coffee with you, and we could share stories, and our hearts are all for good. That's why you're here. So you guys, what I say, what I think is, let's set a precedent here in the Clearwater County for freedom, for personal freedoms. Whatever you can within the scope of what you can do, find the loopholes, represent us, help us, because the next step is going to be civil war. We're there. Everyone is done, you know? And that's not a threat from me. I'm saying we the serfs are done with being oppressed, right? So to me, for, for such a time as this, you have been called to this place of power and a seat of power. Whatever you can do, do it. Let's work for us. And guess what? Instead of you guys, and when I say you guys, it's not disrespectful, I'm just saying, instead of you telling us, this is what we're going to do, and then we come here and argue with you, is there not a process where you can poll us and ask us what we want? I bet you we could have, have five points of what we want, and then enact that into the law, you know? It would, it wouldn't be hard. It would, it would, like, let's keep it simple, stupid, you know? And so I also want, like, but I'm, I'm saying, it doesn't take, it's so complicated now. Life, it's gotten too complicated. We don't need this complication. So I wrote things down so I could hurry. I propose that changes be made reflecting what we the people need and want. I want this on record. I would like to have minutes of this meeting to know that what each thing was said. I would like you guys to be able to look at what we said and acknowledge each point, and get back to us with feedback on what you guys have decided of what we have said today. And I would like to know that, that, like you know, we are, we are in crisis. We need access to affordable living. I am asking that we would have a residence on land smaller than 80 acres, and that we can decide how that is, not a guest house, but a house. We need it, guys. We have people dying in the streets that are quietly dying, the, the working poor. The middle class is, is leaving, is gone. It's, it's, it's been destroyed. So how can we have direct representation of the desires of this group? I'm asking this group. I'm asking you guys to make a change. How can we have direct representation of what we've said today? And after this, can you guys get back to us with what the responses are of that? And how can we get things passed after we've made it clear what we want? Tell us how we can get it passed with you. Exactly. Figure it out. Like, I know you, you're smart. Everybody here obviously is very smart. How can you poll us, find out what we want, and get it on paper for us? We want, we want freedom. We want to be able to have our land the way we see fit and not be micromanaged. And, and very importantly, thank you for listening to me this long. I know I'm a Gabby Annie. AHS, we don't want their overreach. We don't trust them. They hurt us. And we want that taken out. We want all the gratuitous stuff from AHS taken out. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Brenda McKenzie. I've lived in the Clearwater County.
Brenda, Brenda, can you move your mic right down? Yeah.
Sure. For over 40 years. And first, I'd like to thank Mary Ann and the members of the Tax Payers Association for all the hard work they do to keep the county accountable and the residents informed. I also credit this group for the reason that everybody was here today. So first off, looking through these drafts, which I've obtained most of them, I've worked in administration for, from the historic park to energy companies, and the draft could have been done so much easier and accessible. And when I talked to the county about that, I said, in documents that I've had been involved in, when you're doing a change, all you do is strike the old bylaw, and you put the new bylaw behind it. And then people can easily go through it and see what it was and what you're changing. When I asked the county about it, they told me that would take too much time. Now, I've heard they've done it to some of the draft sense, but the final draft needs to be done this way for easy transparency. The other issue I have is this complaint-based structure of this county. So how many times have I heard that a neighbor or somebody is upset with what's going on in somebody else's property? So they phone in and they make a complaint. So the county comes, they show up, and for example, there was one in Nordig where their tree, one person's tree was leaning over somebody else's. They get out there and they say, oh, that C can, the county does this, that C can should not be there. They not only don't, or just deal with the one complaint, but they will check out the whole property. I know of another long-term resident in this area that is, told me that he's prepared to move away, and he's a third-generation person, because a quarter land was bought beside his house. The person that bought this land complained about the original homestead being too close to the road. So the county came out to look at that, and then commented on his collection, well, that's what my friend calls it, they said their pile of steel, which is old combines and everything from his grandfather, and said that that's kind of messy. Also asked this fellow, I see you got your big truck in the yard. Also asked this fellow, um, I see you got your, um, big truck in the yard, is, are you running a business out of this? Should this be commercial? This is overreach, and I feel any person wants to make a complaint on somebody else's property, the county should go visit their land first, and then walk around and, and mind their business, okay? Because if a neighbor can't talk to a neighbor, but just has, you're pitting the neighbors against the neighbors. And it's total bullshit, okay? So with that said, I would like to say that, um, I'm opposed, and I feel it, um, this, this whole document, um, has way too much overreach. And you represent us, and you need to listen to us. And I am going to ask you a question, and I would like it answered here today. What will it take to table these bylaws until after the election? Can anybody answer that for me right now? So can I make that motion? Oh, you guys have to do that?
Yes.
Okay, well, remember, you're representing us. And the other one is, I would like to see you produce a transparent document, so that the old bylaw is there, and then I can see what the new one is. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Reeve and Council and Administration. I'm Regie Pelier. I'm a Nordague landowner for the past seventeen years. Uh, just as a little bit of background, I have a forty-year, uh, professional career as a professional engineer and a senior executive of very large corporations. So I've been involved in this process. This process has been a good first, second, third, fourth, and sixth, fifth and sixth attempt. You're not finished, is what I'm saying. So there should, there, from all these comments, there should be a seventh revision come out. And because of that, there's no way that you can complete a second and third reading today, because you have to give that seventh revision out to public notification for their review. So that's that, so. I wanted, I've got, I've got a bunch of, uh, points here, I'm going to bounce around a little bit. I'm going to try to stay on some high-level points first before I get down to some minutia details that I see in the leisure residence bylaws. One of the things is, when I bought my property seventeen years ago, I looked at Clearwater County and Nordague especially, for its rural environment that it offered, and its outdoor atmosphere that it provided, and the community that it represented at the time. And the big thing was, it was, it's not a Canmore. That's why I bought into, into Nordague. But right now, based on what I'm seeing with this bylaw, based on what I've seen with the White Goat node and the Alexo nodes that you just did a review of last week, and those nodes, from what I look at here, can allow as, up to fi- a population basis in those two nodes, of, of as much as five thousand people. All, all I'm seeing is a huge commercialization to get dollars to come in. I'm not against progressive development, I'm, but what I'm seeing here is absolute push to become another Canmore. And all we have to do is look at the cost of what Canmore's cau- caused. The other thing is, when I bought my property, uh, when I purchased my property, I thought I owned my property with the associated landowner rights. But today, I feel as if I've beholded serf to my landlord council. And I'll give you an example. You need, everybody needs to look at your land use bylaws specifically for your districts. In Nordague, I live on a leisure residence property. It says my side yard setbacks are forty feet, and my front and rear are fifty. And I'm not allowed to put anything in that zone. Every, good question. We won't ask that right now, all, but the point I'm trying to get at is this, if you add up all that area, I'm on an approximately plus minus one acre lot. If you add up all that area, that represents, uh, forty-nine percent of my property that I can't use. But I'm paying property taxes on a hundred percent of it. I might end up having to ask for a refund. I'd be happy to donate that to the county as a park space if that's what they want. Okay, now. Yeah, I'm just going to flip on a couple of points here. Bob made, uh, Hagzma did a great job in his presentation. Bob, I think in some respects, you, you were right, that this is helping provide clarity. Clarity, I think, could have provided, been provided in a less big document, but they're, they're going in the right direction, I think. But what I would like to say on that is that with regards to, uh, you, you talked about sense of community, I think you made a comment in there. Well, I want to tell you this. Seventeen years ago, when I bought it, the property, yeah, when I bought that property seventeen years ago, I knew my neighbors. But now that you're allowing Airbnbs, you're allowing short-term rentals, I don't know who my neighbors are anymore. I really don't. The other thing is, today, with regards to this, I only learned last night from my counselor, Neil Ratcliffe. I was, I did a deep dive review of, uh, version five. He said, oh, Reg, there's a version six. And that was released and published on the website only last Friday. How can people be, that's less than a week. And when I look at version six, there's a ton of redline changes in there. This is, so bottom line, I don't want to take any more time because other people are behind me. I think there's enough discussion today and enough that you should end up going back to the drawing table, put the consultant and the planning department back to work to incorporate all these changes, changes and recommendations, and come up with a version seven, and bring it back to the public going forward. Thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. My name is Cassandra Lameront. Um, I am actually a brand-new resident to the area. I bought an acreage out in Clearwater County. It took me twenty years to get here. My partner, um, he's actually, was born in Rocky Mountain House. His family is one of the original families of the area. So it was really exciting for us to be able to return home, so to speak. I've been camping in the area with my kids for more than twenty years. When I started going through the documents, I was actually shocked that everything was being all lumped in together. Part of the reason I came out here was because I wanted the freedom to develop my property the way that I choose to. I want to be able to put a secondary residence for my parents. They are getting older, I don't want them in an old age home. By wrapping all these restrictions and everything around, um, what we can do in rural areas, the comment that was made about, did an HOA write this earlier in the meeting? That's how it read to me. The other thing that I also found very concerning is how subjective some of it is. There's no parameters wrapping around things. So if I like gnomes and I build a twenty-foot gnome in my yard, and that bylaw officer doesn't like my gnome, I have to take it out, is kind of how, I, that's an extreme example. But if I want a rainbow fence because I want to promote pride, somebody doesn't like it, there's a complaint. I want to strongly encourage that this be pulled back, not approved, without looking at it further. And from what my understandings are, A H S provides recommendations. They are not something that have to be followed. I do understand the need for protections. I am all about protecting the environment. I wouldn't want anybody coming in and razing land. Also, the whole solar farm thing, I won't go into it. But yeah, um, as it sits, I would like to put my voice forward and say, I am opposed for where it sits. Thank you.
Hello, my name, my name is Walter Crabbe. I am a Clearwater County resident, and I operate a farm near Rocky, which I've been on for sixty years. We do need regulation in our community, or else everything would go crazy. But I am a person of detail, and this is an overwhelming amount of information and regulation, which needs to be thought about. We should always attempt to reduce the amount of regulation in our lives and to be given more time on these proposed amendments. Thank you.
I would like to propose to everyone here, if you are, if you are against these amendments and you would like them postponed, and if you would like A H S out of our business, stand up where you are, you don't have to come forward and just say your name, please.
Marie, you are out of order, because we did give you a chance already to speak.
Oh, okay, thank you, jeez.
No, no, we would want, we would like to have
That's, that's fine. You and your frickin' watch telling people you've got thirty seconds left. Very good. That's all I, all I have to say, is that if you want, stand up and give your name.
They are.
Good morning. I think we're still morning. Sorry. Good afternoon. I'll commend all of you and the folks in this room for being warriors. We've made it a long way. I also want to commend this council for putting together what I consider groundbreaking when you put together the PAC committee. Those were representatives from our community, and that isn't easily done. So well done to those who were on that PAC committee, who decided to put their time and efforts into our, the community we love. I find myself standing here in opposition to the land use bylaw, while I recognize a twenty-four-plus-year-old document needs, absolutely needs to be replaced, because we need to celebrate property rights. But in its current form, this won't work. You need to hear the people that are standing in front of you and the letters that have been written to you. You need time to adjust to that. You need time to amend the document that sits in front of you as it stands right now. I implore you, do not pass second and third readings until you've made the appropriate amendments. I will tell you, on you need to simplify the document, and I'm going to put it this, this way. Pair it down. As I said, please celebrate our property rights when you write this document. I implore you to prove to us today that you've heard us by not putting through second and third readings. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ron Leopard. I'm a Clearwater County resident. I would like it known that I'm not in favor of passing, uh, this right now. It's incredibly significant. It is going to determine my future and whether or not my family can carry on business in the county. We hope to stay. It's close to fifty years. I, I believe there's more people that are not aware of what's going on than those that are aware. I would request that each and every county resident be sent a copy of the seventh draft. Number two, I would ask that, at the coming election, perhaps we let the people vote on whether or not they're in favor. There was something you mentioned earlier about a lot of gray hairs here. My, my kids couldn't come because they couldn't get the day off. Boss wouldn't let them. Well, I'm the boss, but, you know, they couldn't afford it. Uh, it's desperate. And at the moment, I can't move them out to my place because I, as well, am stalled with my plans of what I wish to do and how I'd like to expand. I can't do it. It's nobody's fault. It's just too darn many rules and regulations that have to be passed through. So please let the people vote in favor or against with informed consent. Thank you.
Good day, Council. Uh, my name is, uh, Christopher Reed. I'm of the Ellerton family. I'm bringing it forward mostly to speak, uh, towards, uh, landowners, um, and the pressure, I guess, that they feel, maybe not being heard today, uh, and previous times, uh, before. Um, I also want to put down that I do not accept the, uh, L U B as written currently. I do understand that there needs to be a set of regulations, uh, parameters, guidelines, uh, to govern things. However, uh, some of those writings, uh, some of those approaches, I think, are above council and above administration, and it doesn't, it shakes down from above you guys to you guys, and doesn't shake down to us as the public very well. Uh, in doing so, it leaves people left out, it leaves people shy on information. Uh, people are not trusting right now because we were nearly destroyed and torn apart as a society in the last five to six years, uh, because of the health scenarios that went on in our community. I, myself, was deeply affected by that and, uh, need to speak towards that, um, but can't do that here, of course, because a lot of people feel they can't speak towards it because it's kept kind of under the radar. Uh, but what they can stand up for is stand up for their rights, uh, to be heard. Um, if we're not being heard, we're being deflected, we're being misdirected, and it then just gets shoved off into the corner. And I see this within government or, organizations, whether it be federal, provincial, or municipal. So it just shakes down. Uh, I would urge anybody here, anybody behind me that probably already knows about Agenda Twenty-One and Agenda Twenty-Thirty, that these, these aspects of what is happening in our administrations, in our local counties, in our municipalities, shakes down from the Agenda Twenty-One and Agenda Twenty-Thirty goals. Um, a lot of these goals have been carried through, uh, that's why you see A H S implemented into our daily lives. When health and my well-being comes from my intent towards myself, it doesn't come from my government, because my government doesn't care about my health and well-being. They only care about budgets and paying, uh, and, and developing policy. So, uh, policy doesn't trickle down well to the public because it's not really, in the end, about the people on the ground. It's literally about pushing policy forward so that there can be something on paper that then can be acted upon by enforcement. Uh, so today, again, I put forward that I do not support the L U B as written, that it needs more attention brought to it, and an extensive, uh, public re-engagement, that you guys call this a public engagement, and this is, but it, we've had these engagements previously, and we've been ignored and denied, and the apathy from that that has been created is not, uh, progressive in itself. So, uh, thank you for all that you folks do here at the county, as well as the administration. Uh, appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jerry Friesen, I'm a Clearwater, Clearwater County resident, and, um, I just want to say for the record, I'm opposed to the, to the U B C.
L U B?
L U B. Thank you.
So before you begin, Mary Ann, um, I'm just, uh, looking at the crowd that, um, once you've complete your, uh, presentation, that I think we're gonna want to just take a quick break.
I can understand that, Michelle. Okay, my name is Mary Ann Cole. I'm, uh, a resident of Clearwater County, obviously. And, uh, president of the Clearwater County Tax Payers Association, and I, uh, thank Brenda for the recognition that she gave us in, uh, with regards to the rap that we put on the Western Star. And the reason that we put that rap on the Western Star is because we felt that the people were not adequately informed as to what had been going on with the land use bylaw. Now, I have made a presentation here, and, uh, we'll put up some of the points on the screen. A lot of very, very valuable comments have already been expressed in this regard, so I don't want to take everybody's time to repeat so I don't want to take everybody's time to repeat those. I will just, and I have given a copy of my presentation to council and to the planning. But again, I do want to thank council, planning, the consultant, members of the PAC committee, and everybody that came to the public engagement meetings earlier for their time and effort that they have put in. Also, going on now to the rebuttals there that, okay, my special concerns, I don't know if you can read them up on the screen there, and this has been mentioned earlier. One of the real concerns is making the document more user-friendly and reducing unnecessary bureaucratic process. Like, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven pages is very difficult for people to go through and process. And I do want to mention to council and planning also that the public was only able to get a copy of this latest draft on Monday, which, you know, that only left really two days. It was Monday afternoon that it became available to the public. Well, I've heard that comment before as well. Now, the other thing is that in draft six, the tracking is not in red. So, you cannot, or at least in the copy that I was provided, people could not see what the changes were. Anyway, so, as I said, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven pages is a rather lengthy document. But by comparison, if you look up on the screen, the County of Pinocca's land use bylaw is seventy-three pages long. Okay, going on to the concerns about the definitions, and it was already expressed when, was it? I can't remember which one of the people I said, that there's way too many definitions. We know what the definition of a church, or a cemetery, or a funeral home is. Why does that need to be in there? And the longer that you make the document, the less you're going to have people read it. They don't want to read a two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-page document. Anyway, in the previous land use bylaw, there were a hundred-and-sixteen definitions. This one has two-hundred-and-ninety-one. Okay, going on, there are concerns with the regulations and the process. In the previous, now, I know Bob doesn't agree with me here on this, but that's okay. We can disagree and still have conversation. In the previous bylaw, there were twelve requirements for development permit applications. In this new land use bylaw, there are twenty-seven required bits of information for a development permit, a potential, you know, list of developments, plus an additional possible twenty-three. So, you could be required to provide thirty bits of information, whereas in the previous one, it was only twelve. Okay, going on to concerns with enforcement. And again, that outlines the process of what would happen if you went against the land use bylaw, if there were contraventions. And so, there's a list of fines for infractions, and there's a difference of fines between, you know, private enterprises and commercial businesses. Certainly, the fines for industry and commercial are higher than for individuals. But the fines have doubled, and so they may start at five-hundred, but it can go up to ten thousand dollars and then imprisonment. And it's really interesting, and maybe I didn't keep my draft four, but I think it was draft four that took out the word, because there had been concerns about why should imprisonment be included here. That's a bit of overreach. So, it was dropped in one of the previous drafts. But it's come back in this last one. And so, the fines up to ten thousand dollars and imprisonment. Yeah, exactly. Okay. Going on to the public engagement, we've heard that there were several meetings, and yes, people have had the opportunity, but the advertising about that hasn't been adequate. And I just want to show you by comparison. Okay, I think most of you have seen the, the rap. Okay, so that was in the Western Star, advertising this so that people could get informed. This corner page here, that's what the county put in. No, it's very unnoticedable. And then, the overreliance on the county's website. And I heard now, when I came here and I was talking to a friend, a neighbor, and he was mentioning the difficulty that he had in accessing any information about this. And so, and I see other people saying, yeah, okay, their hands are up. So, where we get heard that we've done our job, we've put the ads in the paper, people can go on the website, but if it's not eye-catching and if the website isn't easily accessible, easily workable, then people are not getting adequately informed.
Mary Ann, Mary Ann, you're eating up your time.
Yes, yes, I agree with that too, Bonnie, that connectivity isn't- Exactly. I've got to carry on because that's part of my, that question was part of my time limit there. Okay, so going on to the what we heard report, and this is what was put in county documents, county information, that thirty-eight percent were strongly opposed, ten percent opposed, forty-eight percent were, that adds up to forty-eight percent in opposition, and we have seen and heard that today. Finally, the comment about that this is a living document. Okay, yes, there can be amendments, and they say that they have several amendments all the time. But the amendments are, in the majority, of changing, of an individual, changing from just, say, agricultural to CRA or something like that, that is not involving the changing of the rules. And so, you know, there are many problems here of issues with the actual document itself. And so, to say that, you know, it's a living document, it can be changed, but it would take a long time to do that. So, now what? As we have gone on, carry on, now what? They could pass it today, they could defeat it, or they could delay it. And I have to give you one example of what's recently happened in the County of Vermillion River. They were facing the very same thing. They were going through a land use bylaw. They had a consultant out of Edmonton helping them. Many of the rules and regulations were very similar to here, overly restrictive. They had over four-hundred people come to the public hearing, a public meeting, and so there, and the people asked to have it delayed. So, the council of Vermillion River has delayed passing it until after the election. Then, they will follow up with reviewing their current document with a group of public representatives and council members. But they are not going to involve a consultant again. They want- They want to hear from the people, the people with their feet on the ground in this area. So, that's what they want done with that. Now, I was going to ask for a straw vote too, but I think those straw votes have already been taken so you know people's opinions on the document itself. There is just one question I would like to ask, and that is, how many people would like to have this delayed until after the election so that the Division Two can have their representation that they do not have now and that the new council that will be dealing with this document will be the one that will make the decision on it? How many people would like to have this delayed? Thank you. How many people think it should move forward? I believe, council, you've heard, you've seen, and I trust that with the oath that you made to represent the people, that the decision that you go forward with will be in recognition of the voice of the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. So, with that, we're going to take a quick fifteen-minute break and return. Thank you. You can come and do that anytime you want. Great. We're on break. Fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes. I said fifteen minutes. I want to get through this.
I mean, landowners are gonna have a right, and we're an agricultural county. I wanna see agriculture grow. They do pay eighty-three percent or ninety-three percent of our tax base. There is a lot of those. And the oil, oil pays ninety-three percent of our tax base. That's farm now. I don't know. I wasn't in on that meeting, but as far as I know, it's through a farm, and they're producing produce. Yeah, that's what I am.
You know, like, one time, like, there's a man that I always talk about, he's trying to find the land that I'm in, and I'm like, oh, yeah. But then, you know, I just think it's overreach. Not, you know, not necessarily, but I'm like, uh, you know, it's kind of, you know, it's not great, it's not really, you know, it's not, 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 you know, it's
Yeah, so the old one, for example, allows for four things. You can do it in agricultural parcel without a permit. The new one would require a permit. You have like forty things to do. Exactly. Old man's warm heart.
All right. So I'll now reconvene the public hearing and after that break. So it's now one oh five. And we will continue on in regards to, we are still in the section in regards to anyone post the application. Uh, we have members of the public, I believe, that are waiting online to speak or.
Nobody's indicated.
Nobody's indicated that. Is there anyone in Rocky Mountain House at the council chambers wishing to speak?
Nobody at council chambers.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I will give this another opportunity for anyone here that would, that has not spoke, that would like to come and speak their opposition at this time. If not, I'm going to move on to written submissions. I love that buzzer. Oh, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Rob Duker. I live in Clearwater County, about eight kilometers east of Rocky. And, and I, I didn't come here being, you know, as, as in favor or opposed, except I can summarize my opposition similar, simply about the complaints basis aspect of this because I, I think that's, that's just downright silly. That, you know, real estate people are going to have to know where all the complainers live so you can locate yourself somewhere where there aren't any complainers. Um, it's, uh, enforcement should be a little bit more, I don't know, fair and equal and not dependent on, on how complaining a bunch of neighbors you have. But one thing I, I've kind of noticed today, sort of being on the defense person, is you don't have a line for the undecided. You just have the, the unfavors and the, and the opposed. So every time somebody asked for, you know, straw poll, you know, everybody thinks I'm against them. So I don't know if I have room full of friends or room full of enemies, but they're all, you know, I, I'm still on the fence. Um, but what I, what I have noticed is, is just the impossibility of, of the job. Because we, you know, we heard people say, um, on, on the no side, we heard them say, I want complete freedom on my yard, but I also don't want my neighbor to have an Airbnb. Uh, I want complete freedom on my yard, but I want to know all of the contents of the application that my neighbor made to make some changes, right? So there's, there are some things that make this really difficult. But what I would say that I've heard consistently is about simplifying the thing and starting with, you know, if, if, if the Pinoka document is seventy-eight pages long. Uh, maybe what we should do is start with that and see if, by editing it, if you turn, if it turns into a three hundred page document or if it turns into a hundred and two page document. Um, and, uh, I, I presume it will grow because we have more zoning, more zones, more, you know, more hamlets, more villages. Um, but anyway, um, that's my two cents and I don't know if a line is forming behind me, but I'll get out of the way. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was trying to be.
That's okay.
I was trying to be first, but that other gentleman beat me to the podium. Uh, my name is Bonnie Carson. Bonnie spelled B-O-N-N-Y. Carson, C-A-R-S-O-N. I'm in decision six, division six. Please, counselor, will you stand up if you belong to division six?
I do.
Oh, please, please stand. Okay. Hello, everybody. It's waiting in the audience. This man is representing the district division that I am in. Sir, you don't know me, do you?
I do not.
And how long have you been in service?
Four years and I went to every farm in this area that didn't have a gate on it.
Well, I'm sorry. We do not have a gate on our entrance to our house. And I have not seen you before, other than I was told there's a man with a cowboy hat and that's our division. But Tim Hoven used to be our division guy and he's been to our place quite a few times to go over council stuff. So from now on, sir, my name is Bonnie. I am a Clearwater County taxpayer and I have a joint ownership on the land. Out on North Raven Road, three, seven, zero, with Dennis Murphy. Now, on previous conversations, I've.
Is this in regards to the land use by law, Bonnie? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Because I would like Counselor Sirmakta said, if he could.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sit down. I want to say that, that everybody here on this planning is talking about E V, E Vs with energy renewable systems and, uh. Sea containers on your property, RVs on your property and on and on about all this other stuff. But, you know, I have a real beef about how the county operates when they do road construction. And to deal with communications. And we talk about their A H S, Alberta Health Services. And I have had in the past, Dennis can vote for me because he called nine one one for me on Mother's Eve. Day for me and I went to sendry by the EMS. Then, a month later, I went, called EMS myself and got taken down to sendry again. Well, we talk about communications. Well, where we live, my cellphone sometimes works, sometimes don't work. Sometimes I can get a tower from one place near Caroline and then I can get a tower communication in an, in house in another area. But when I get into the EMS, they're trying to convert messages to the hospital to be prepared for me as emergency coming, case I have a heart problem. And there's nothing. Not a thing. They can't communicate. So if my heart all of a sudden stops, the EMS truck does stop and the two people try and revive you on the spot without communication. That is terribly scary. So now I'm going to go back to the episode. We were talking, Michelle Swanson and Dennis and I in the break about road construction. Now, we're going to a communication problem again. The construction lasted about three years on our road, not very far, from Range Road four, five, as counselor should know, to seven sixty-one. Now, that little bit of road was under construction. The tell us line was taken out of the ground. Today, it's still not in the ground. We went after the council of Clearwater County to get that line put back in. Well, we have dealt with issues of no phone for the landline. With a phone, my cellphone don't work properly and our landline was taken out of commission different times. Once to the fact that neighbors were trading, cleaning up snow, didn't see the line. And saw it very dead. So then we had no, no phone. Then, beautiful sunny day, I think it was in the spring. Uh. We were on phone. It was working fine and all of a sudden, no phone. Well, what the heck? Beautiful weather, not a storm, no snow. We don't have a phone again. No landline. So I said, this is no good. Every time I contact Clearwater County.
You have one minute left, Bonnie. Sorry.
Okay. They're not responsible. So I said, enough is enough. So I called my M L A. And finally, we started getting some cooperation. There's a lot of seniors on our road. There is one lady I know in particular. She wears one of these things around her neck. So that she can alert her family if she's maybe fallen or she don't feel well. She needs help. Dennis, I don't know if he's going to like it, but I'm going to tell you what, he, he is a bionic man. He is very lucky. He has died four times. He has a pacemaker and a defibrillator. And I just want to say, thank you for our health up at the Masinkowski. They helped him. Now, I want to say one other thing. We do have a, a device in our house. It's no bigger than a, a little phone that you used to put on, on your desk. Has a, like a mouse that you use for your computer. And anytime he could put it up to his chest and have a reading and it could go to a single, down to a tower, up to the Masinkowski and we can know right away what's going on. I have yet to figure out how that thing works because it's only plugged into one ten. But it really pisses me off when our tell us line gets taken out of the ground, doesn't get put back in. But yet our council can take and put lines and pay for it all the way out to Nordick to have communications. And yet, in the hub of.
Your.
Clearwater County, communications is very poor.
Thank you.
So thank you. I'm glad I got a chance to say my beef. And no, I don't want to say yes to the proposal that you, I'm saying no. I think you need all more time. And like you said, division two doesn't have a representative and the representative that I have doesn't really even know me. So thank you very much.
All right. Um, Mike, was there any other, um, people online?
I haven't received any.
Okay. Sounds good. We'll wait a couple of seconds. Uh, maybe I could ask Director Hager to maybe start reading a couple of the submissions and if there is something, just send a wave and we'll go directly online, please.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, submissions, um, that we put into the opposed category. Uh, first one from Jennifer Edwin and Lexie Davis. Unfortunately, we are working in Red Deer and cannot attend the public hearing at the hub in Caroline. We would still like our opinion to be heard as Claretto County landlords and our vote counted. We are disappointed in the public hearing is during work hours and I hope this was not deliberately planned to minimize attendance. We reviewed the current proposal for future land use bylaws in Claretto County governing landowners. We oppose the changes in the new proposals. And do agree that the new land use bylaw proposal be dropped in its entirety and at minimum be moved to voted upon by a new council as the current council could possibly be leaving office. We moved to Claretto County for a reason. To draw this, uh, the draw to this area was the people, the properties, the lifestyle and the current land use policies in place that appeal to our way of life. We felt Claretto County was the county to establish our forever home in and was less mis, uh, micromanaged than the majority of the counties we reviewed to live in. The lifestyle and freedom of Claretto County appealed to us and, uh, we are sure appeals to many. Please count our voters opposed to the new land use bylaw proposal. We hope making our voice heard, we can support the current way of life, um, of that in our neighbors. I thank you for accepting this in lieu of attendance. Next letter received was from Brad Clark. Brad, Brad Clark just refers to a specific definition. Dwelling leisure residence means a dwelling unit suitable for residential use only seasonally or occasionally during leisure or holiday time. And generally lacking in one or more of the components, conveniences or utilities for, required for all your occupancy. Just a comment regarding this definition. As you are aware, there is specifically a leisure district in Nordick and I'm almost certain every one of those properties are built for year round occupancy. They are not treated as seasonal by their homeowners. This, the exception would be miners campground. The next letter I had on my list was read out verbally by one of the attendees in the audience. Uh, the one following that is from Diana Davis. Diana says, as a resident of Claretto County and a future acreage taxpaying resident, I'm in favor of allowing C cans to be used for storage and outbuildings on one's property. The, please see below the reasons I've listed. C cans are considerably, considerably more budget friendly than the equivalent size wood structure. Most times residents require a quick budget friendly solution to store belongings, equipment and miscellaneous. The cost difference is quite substantial for a C can versus a wood structure. The wood structure being more expensive alternative. Then the moving cost of one cannot move it themselves. Please don't always have the time, uh, people don't always have the time or money to search for and buy reasonably priced wood structures or sheds along with potentially applying for a permit or anything over a hundred and fifty square feet. Then wait for the permit to potentially be approved. C cans structurally are more durable than wood structures, especially over a long period of time. Our central Alberta weather can get very windy, conditions taking the siding and roof materials off wood building structures, especially when not installed properly. Thus, extra monetary and time expenses for owners or future owners. Wood structures require more maintenance and upkeep than C cans do, costing residents more time and money. C cans are more secure than a wood stick built structure. Detering criminal behavior. The newer units have two spots to secure doors with locking devices and one spot being inconspicuous. Wood shed structures typically don't have this feature. C cans are deter animal wildlife behavior, prevalently mice, which can be hazardous to one's health if not taking preventative measures with animal feces being present. In the event of grass fire, forest fire, C can is much safer than wood stick built structure to store materials or even to take refuge in in the event of not being able to escape a property fire. Their vast majority, uh, vast amount of property owners in the county area, whether it be agricultural or acreage ownerships, who have C cans for storage. Some have applied for permits and many have not. A property owner should be able to choose for themselves which type of storage building or otherwise they can have on their property without fear of being fined or jail time for not meeting these conditions. It doesn't give a person a very peaceful feeling if they own a real property, ag and acreages and have bylaws that limit their freedoms substantially, especially if these people are law abiding and faithful taxpaying citizens that have pride of ownership evident in their property. Have the members of Claretto County Board researched other county bylaws in the province and what they consist of and maybe compare and make adjustments. Just a suggestion if that's not been done yet. Next letter on the list was from Otto Bertinoli. Under pipe, part six enforcement, it must be made clear the steps to challenge an order or a penalty. How do you challenge? What notice is required and who or what group listens to the dispute? This needs to be made transparent upfront. A fair and transparent process might be, must be laid out in order for the citizens to trust and buy into your process. Next one I have on my list was from Christine Frozier, or Fozier, sorry, apologize.
I'll, I'll read it.
Okay.
Dear public council and administration. My name is Christine Fozier and I'm writing today to you in opposition of the proposed L U B. As per multiple previous requests by myself, by others, and a majority of consensus from taxpayer surveys, it is requested that this be put off until the new council is in place. I have put in an insane amount of time pointing out issues with this document while not being paid for my time. I couldn't afford to give any more of my time to sit through this painful day of once again being ignored. You have received at least two multiple page letters from me outlining problems with this document as well as a few shorter letters speaking to concerns, concerns of ramming this through. You have received my letter requesting the consultant resign from the project with pay and that this be put into the resident's hand to work along with PAC and council for an adequate and acceptable document, just as the county of Vermillion has done. I also attended every open house to ask questions and point out the ridiculous and overreach in many sections. Administration took a full scan of.
How do you challenge? What notice is required and who or what group listens to the dispute? This needs to be made transparent upfront. A fair and transparent process must be laid out in order for the citizens to trust and buy into your process. Next one I have on my list was from Christine Fosier, sorry, I apologize.
Oh, I'll read it.
Okay.
Dear Public Council and Administration, my name is Christine Fosier and I'm writing today to you in opposition of the proposed LUB. As per multiple previous requests by myself, by others, and a majority of consensus from taxpayer surveys, it is requested that this be put off until the new council is in place. I have put in an insane amount of time pointing out issues with this document while not being paid for my time. I couldn't afford to give any more of my time to sit through this painful day of once again being ignored. You have received at least two multiple-page letters from me outlining problems with this document as well as a few shorter letters speaking to concerns of ramming this through. You have received my letter requesting the consultant resign from the project with pay and that this be put into the resident's hand to work along with PAC and council for an adequate and acceptable document, just as the County of Vermillion has done. I also attended every open house to ask questions and point out the ridiculous and overreach in many sections. Administration took a full scan of all my draft notes for almost everything I have said, only to be ignored or twisted in the draft of what we heard report. An example would be a non-conforming clause still remains absent. Some of us also noted that administration purposely never read out some of our questions. I spoke at the Renewable Energy Bylaw Public Hearing, which will form part of this LUB document in opposition, and at the same time served you with the document about IPA II, Public Participation Policy, with over 60 residents' signatures on it. The request was to change how you engage the public and that has never been brought back up, just ignored. We want to be consulted and involved, not just informed. At least Administration listened to my suggestion of making the permitted discretionary section more clear by separating out what is allowed and what requires a permit and brought that forward to council for their approval. However, that change has not been made in the draft as of July 23rd and at the time of sending this letter. And still throughout the entire document, it is unclear what context the word permitted is being used in. One of the most ridiculous sections is the development not requiring a permit section. There are 10 points in this section that only don't require a permit if you previously had a permit. This nonsense is so frustrating and this document is actually longer and worse to read than our current 71401 LUB. The Objects Prohibited in Yards section is clearly too much overreach. How do we get to such a place in society where we have to spy on and judge our neighbors? Whatever happened to people minding their own business instead of everyone else's? I guess COVID showed us how we are supposed to rat on our neighbors and even our families. Sad state of affair we are in. It is clear that Administration wants to ram forward with an inadequate document that doesn't set up for peaceful community, but rather a community of pitting neighbor against neighbors and creating more division in the wards. In the words of my neighbor from Russia, in Russia, you do not dare report on your neighbors. There is the doubling of the enforcement section and threats of massive fines and imprisonment, turning honest, hardworking people into criminals for noncriminal acts. It is clear that Administration is running the show and council is only there to make decisions on their behalf and not on behalf of the residents being affected by the decision and the out-of-control spending. It is clear that some counselors flat-out lie on camera about listening to the majority who show up to speak. When three people showed up to speak in opposition to the Renewable Energy Bylaw and zero spoke in favor, you clearly ignored the majority who spoke. I request that you please stop lying to us about listening to the majority as it is evident by the majority of residents who oppose the MDP. Only one counselor supported the majority and continues to do so, while the rest treat him as if he is beating a dead horse. Speaking to council and Administration for many of us is like beating a dead horse. We know we are ignored. The negative implications the MDP and LUB create is of grave concern to us. Many of us see you as steering the ship into an iceberg. Please note that I'm not in favor of our current LUB either. It is also a horrible document that most of us didn't even know existed until 2023, despite living in the county most of all of our lives. It sat there quietly waiting for the Agenda 2030 to move forward to a totalitarian control state, also known as communism or the New World Order. This is not a democracy we are living in, it's an oligarchy mess.
Did you have another submission, Director Hager?
Thank you Chair. I did have one for Mr. Bellet, he's in the room and we weren't able to open your attachment, so I don't know if you're, it still wasn't able to be opened, so I can't read that into the record, but if you wish to speak further, I guess we could give you this opportunity.
Mr. Bailey, could you just come to the mic so that way?
And it's Bellet, by the way. What it was, was a document, I did a deep dive analysis of what was available to me, which was version five. And now Neil kindly advised me because he got a copy of this document, said, Reg, hey, the latest document is version six. But on the version five, I went through and did an analysis, it was completely focused on Nordegg's LR District Zone. There's a lot of issues in there. One is you've dropped out the 20-foot tree buffer zone and have only continued with the 40-foot side setback. There was a, kudos to you. I wish I had not built my place 17 years ago. I wish I'd built it now because now you're allowing a bigger house. On a single floor, I think it's 800 and a two-story is like almost 1,200 square feet. When I built 17 years ago, 12, two-story was only allowed at 990 and that was with a 10% variance. When Joe Baker was in there, I also tried to build a bigger garage, 24 by 24, and he says, Reg, I can't give it to you. I can give you a 20 wide by 18 deep. Well, I learned in hindsight, you can't park a Ford F-150 in an 18-foot deep garage because the butt end sticks out and gets smashed up by our hailstone. So there was that. The other thing is I picked up on, and there's more, I'm only going to hit a couple of points. It ties into, I can't remember who was previously mentioning here, about the complaint process and that it's essentially weaponized what's going on here. I'd like to suggest right now that there can be a happy medium. If council's not willing to hire a full-time compliance officer, and you did have one about a year and a half ago, and he only lasted for about six months before, he wasn't there anymore for whatever reason. But let me tell you, the attitude, it goes to communication and attitude here, the attitude of that individual was, he'd come onto people's property in Nordegg, pumped up his chest, and I'm the compliance officer and you have to do what I say. Well, that kind of attitude also permeates throughout Administration. And the attitude in, by Nordegg landowners now is, the land use bylaw is a waste of time, so therefore we're going to do what we feel like we need to do. And that's why in Nordegg, as an example, you have 23 C cans that have been there for years. And I don't believe any of them have been, received a development permit. You have, the other aspect is, you developed a short-term rental bylaw and it's a separate bylaw that is just only mentioned that in the LUB, that it exists, but nowhere in the weakness of the LUB, and this is what I mentioned about right now about community, having Airbnb and short-term rentals where we, the landowners bought in, we used to know our neighbors, but now the community has changed. There are many, many, many under-the-radar, non-licensed facilities now. So, many of us who want to know our neighbors don't know our neighbors because every weekend it's a different renter in there and you've also heard complaints about them not abiding by fire regulations, et cetera. So that's a couple of things. So it goes back to where I was going on this whole document when I mentioned, I'll summarize here. There is so much, oh, in version five, it mentioned about maximum size of houses. Version six, lo and behold, that's disappeared. Why was that taken out? So now, in version five, I knew what size people were allowed to build, but now I don't. Just to get, it's not all negative. The good thing in the bylaw on leisure residence, you've got a lot coverage, 45%. Well, that now says on a one-acre lot, 1,800 square meters of that property can be covered with structure. I did make a suggestions many years ago, two years ago, when we were being first asked. One thing that is missing is what's called a lot density. You do have that terminology in one of the district zones in Nordegg, up by the church, I can't remember which zone that is, it does have lot density. So it sort of identifies what number of houses or structures can be on the property. Without a lot density here, that means, so the only thing I have to do is abide by the size and setbacks and if my total lot coverage is less than 45%, I can have whatever I want on that property. If it's a guest house or whatever, if I'm abiding by it, I can have it. So that's where that was going on that document and really that's all I have to say right now. But I think there's a happy medium on the complaint basis process. You've got field employees driving out in Nordegg and around the county all the time. Why can't those people have a little bit of, become planning departments, a little bit of eyes and ears for them and say, hey, I saw something that was kind of odd, and then report that back to planning and let them make the final decision? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any more submissions that need to be read out? Director Hager?
Oh, I had one more that wasn't a submission. It was received over the chat via the online, bear with me while I pull it up. It's a question, a quick question regarding land use by oil companies. Does the current draft put oil companies to task regarding compliance with land use provisions of the land use bylaw?
So there's no further submissions online?
No.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I will now invite Administration and Liz to present any final remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the community that toughed it out in terms of timeframe to sit around and have your voices heard. From an administrative perspective, it's going to be up to council to determine one of those options that were noted earlier in terms of how they wish to proceed with the draft of the land use bylaw. You know, we're not going to go in response by response to respond to the comments received, but we have noted them with the people's names associated and what was being asked for. I will say that it is a tough job in order to achieve 100% perfection as well as making everybody happy because there are divergent comments. We heard, you know, when we position it in favor and opposition, because that's just our standard process for public hearings, you're like, if it's a land use amendment, you're either in favor of it or you're not. When it's a land use bylaw, when you're opposed to something, you're saying, we want secondary housing options or affordable housing options in our community, and this new land use bylaw would allow for that and our current one doesn't, we're losing that amendment when that bylaw isn't approved. So it's hard, like, so it's, you're asking for it, but then you're in opposition to the bylaw so that that good change may not be incorporated. So it is a really tough job and I have to applaud planning staff, all the people who have helped with the process. It has, it has taken some time, it's a very large document and it is a tough decision to make. And some of those comments related to districts and multi-residential units were amended with those comments that we received as part of the process that we wanted to change the current land use bylaw, that council wanted to change the land use bylaw to allow for more types of residential application on parcels, so doing more. Overall, the land use bylaw does allow for more things than the current one. That was the intent of the amendments as well to modernize it. And other than that, I don't, I don't think Administration should, like, council has heard everything that's before you today. I don't think we should go item by item and answer people's comments and say they aren't correct because they may very well be valid, but how we incorporate someone not wishing a neighbor to have two houses versus someone wishing to have two houses, I mean, that's a choice and it has to, has to come down to a decision at some point. Just double checking on my notes in terms of other things. Compliance and enforcement was brought up several times over and it would be great from administrative perspective and I'm sure a neighbor-to-neighbor perspective if there was no need for compliance in the community. But knowing how many concerns come forward to our planning department, I didn't bring a number with me, but there is a list of people who wish their neighbor not to be doing something inappropriate on their parcel. Perhaps somebody has an acreage and they're using it as a campground, as an example. There has to be a mechanism of enforcement so that you can enjoy the use of your property at a reasonable extent, just like your neighbor can. And that's the intent behind enforcement. We don't attempt to come at enforcement in a heavy-handed process. And I believe our staff in dealing with enforcement are very open and reasonable, but some things have to be followed through. Other than that, I think, unless you have any comments, Liz, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, we had one more referral that I did not read. Thank you for bringing that to my attention, I missed that opportunity in my final remarks. And bear with me, referral. This one is from a referral agency, Wataasquen County. Thank you for the opportunity to review Claretto County's draft land use bylaw version five. The County of Wataasquen appreciates being included in the referral process and commends Claretto County on the clarity, organization, and comprehensive scope of the proposed bylaw. We have reviewed the draft by law in relation to the County of Wataasquen's current plans, policies, and land use bylaw and confirm that there are no conflicts or concerns on policy alignment. Of note, there are some differences in how certain discretionary uses between our two counties are approached. In particular, Claretto County provides broad discretion for use such as campgrounds, guest accommodations, tourism, resorts, and recreation-oriented developments in several rural districts. These are valuable economic development tools and we support their inclusion. However, in the County of Wataasquen, proposals of that scale would typically trigger a preparation of an area structure plan, particularly where they involve permanent infrastructure, multiple phases, or access upgrades. With that in mind, we respectfully request Claretto County consider enhanced intermunicipal referrals for larger discretionary developments proposed near the shared boundary, especially when those developments involve significant land use change or long-term servicing conditions. These would include campgrounds, integrated resort-style tourism developments, and other multi-unit accommodations that may generate cross-boundary traffic, servicing pressure, or land use interface considerations. We recognize that the shared boundary between our municipalities largely rural and often separated by crown land, however, continued communication on larger projects will support mutually beneficial planning outcomes and reinforce strong intermunicipal relations. In summary, the County of Wataasquen has no concerns with the proposed land use bylaw and supports its adoption. We value the ongoing collaboration between our municipalities and look forward to continued dialogue on matters of shared interest. Thanks Liz for reminding me that one came in late. Other than that, I think I will, do you have any comments yourself? We'll turn it back to you Chair in terms of the agenda item for the public hearing.
Thank you. And so.
A quick question to this. The County of Wataasquen, are they adjacent to our Clearwater County?
Yes.
Okay, so that's why we.
We have 13 municipalities or IDs or communities that border our community.
So with that, thank you for presenting your final remarks. Counsel have any other questions before I close the public hearing? I will say that we have an opportunity to, that those have come in person and those have been online watching and have submitted emails and letters. We have, this council has, would like to maybe take the time now to consider everything and let Administration compile some, maybe some possible changes and give the time to maybe consider some changes again. And in the, we do have some more meetings, so we're not done working, as some of the counselors here have said, so I'll turn it to council if you have any other specific questions into what was presented today and if not, I will close the public hearing. Any other, anybody would like to speak?
Chair, there's a lady.
No, this is for council. Sorry. Could we take that offline or is this part?
It's just a question about how you guys approach, like everybody else. I'm a nurse practitioner, I am new to the area.
So I would ask you now to, because this is, yeah, please identify yourself, please.
My name's Amy Bellmore, I'm new to the area. Moved here three and a half years ago. Moved here because of the area. I do know my counselor. And Bonnie, if you're still here, hello neighbor. I don't know my neighbors, so, but I do know my counselor. My concern was, is as a nurse practitioner in this specific area, have you guys gone out to certain people's homes that cannot make it to these meetings? I do have patients in this area that cannot read due to being illiterate. I do have patients that can't see. I do have patients who cannot come out, cannot walk, and cannot make it to this. The only reason why I'm here today is I actually seen that whole big folder thing, I didn't see anything else. So I didn't know that this was actually going on. So I'm not sure that they actually know that it was going on also. My just, my question is, is have you seen and have you gone to the homes of some of these people?
Okay, thank you. I do know that, as stated at the beginning by Director Hager, is that we do, you know, add campaigns in the local newspapers, both of them. We do do, yes, on our social media, on our website, and we do do. We do do, yes, on our social media, on our website, and we do do, we have a YouTube channel, so the council has passed first reading. There's access to, you know, the comments there. So this particular public hearing is being livestreamed right now, so if somebody would like to review it, they have the option to review it on their leisure as well, and then still provide comments. I hear you. It's unfortunate. Thank you. All right. Seeing no other comments or questions from council for Administration, I will close the hearing at 1:44. No motions are entertained at this time. Moving on then to item 4.1 in our agenda, which is consideration of second and third reading of this by law 25/050. I'll open up the floor for discussion, motion, questions. Go ahead, Director Hager, please, with the background.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to go through our standard process following a public hearing, we would bring second and third reading options for council as our regular process, understanding that, so the options for council, obviously administratively, the recommendation would be to grant second and third reading of by law 2505 as presented, as amended, whatever council wishes, and that would replace the, so by law 2505 would replace both Clarita County's land use by law 71401 and Caroline land use by law 50. Now, understanding that from what I heard in the public hearing, there may be more amendments to come, of course, we have to, as our administrative duty, provide you options, and, you know, we came prepared to, if we go forward with the draft as is, that's fine. If you wish to further amend that version six of the land use by law today and proceed with second or third reading, that would be up to council's discretion. You could also table the second reading and asking from an administrative perspective if we, if we table it, direction on what those next steps would look like so that we know clearly what we're looking at in terms of timeframe and what you'd like amended. And then the fourth option obviously would be to, to read and refuse second reading if that's so be it. That would in effect take this by law and it would disappear. We would still have the two land use by laws within one municipality, which is a challenge from a legislative perspective, and we would wait until the decision would be made to amend the land use by law. And we would continue to have those biweekly amendments at our regular meetings to the 71401 version of the by law. Again, as the Chair mentioned at the regular council meeting held on June 24th, council had reviewed and gave first reading of the by law 2505. As required by legislation, notice of today's public hearing was advertised in the local papers, and comments were received from referral agencies. I'll go one step further. You mentioned we do websites, social media, newspaper, radio. We do, we do everything we can in terms of getting the information out to the public. Can you always do more communications? Yes, with unlimited resources and budgets, you can. But we have a process that we do for all of our public hearings. We kind of try and follow that same process to make sure it's consistent across the board, and I think our communications team does an excellent job of communicating. We just, it's not a reasonable expectation to go to every household. It's not possible in a community of 18,000 square kilometers to get the information to everybody's doorstep. So saying that, upon consideration of the representations that were made today at today's public hearing, council will make those considerations of the options that I mentioned earlier. And the agenda item goes into the details of where the draft can be found on the website, some of the things that were changed, and all the benefits to it, but I feel like council's had time to read that background, and I'm going to pass it over to you to determine how you'd like to proceed.
Okay, thank you. All right. So looking to the balance of council, is there a way of how we want to proceed with this document? And if so, put it to a motion. Counselor Northcott?
Okay, no, it's very evident today that many residents have come out. This document still needs more work to be done on it, so I would make a motion to postpone second and third reading of by law 25-050 till after the 2025 municipal election.
Okay. Any comments or questions on that motion? Counselor Melhoff?
Thank you, Reeve. Counselor Northcott, you actually beat me to it. I was going to be making a very similar motion as well, not just the amendments here, but the amendments that, of my own, through the numerous documents as well. So I will be absolutely supporting your motion to postpone, barring any of the amendments and the changes needed that we heard today, and in general from our reviews.
Any other comments or questions before I call the question? Counselor Radcliffe?
Thank you. For the large part of this, I have to agree that more work needs to be done. The risk is that there, there are a lot of overdue changes to the land use by law that are included. And the question becomes is, do we take something that's better than nothing or work closer to perfection? I'm certainly in favor of continuing to work on this document that is not ready, but if it goes into the next council, it could be a year before some of these good changes actually come into effect, which leaves our neighbors dealing with regulations that really were overreaching, that, you know, in this revision, they are, those months are repaired. I think the work needs to go on, and we need to get more innovative with it, but to risk losing the good that's here for some period of time. Well, no, but it wouldn't come into force. That's my concern, is getting what's good in here in place as soon as possible. And, and leaving it, leaving it to the next council when it could be done in the life of this council. That's where I object.
If I could, if this is up to Counselor Radcliffe's, this is his comments, please? You can, you can, you can talk to him afterwards. We are going to be putting it to a vote, so let him speak his comments, please.
And I think I've finished, except I will say that I commit to sharing all the money I get from the IMF and WHU with each and every one of you.
Thank you for your comments. Any otherbody else? Counselor Lahied?
Thank, thank you, Reeve Swanson. And I'd like to start by thanking everybody that came out today to participate in this. This is truly a success when we can get our community out and involved with the processes that we're challenged as a municipality, as counselors to represent our community. I appreciate the comments you've made. There are a lot of checks and balances within this proposed by law. I can see we have many issues within our community that we can't deal with directly as council, but I think this by law, in order to address those concerns, will take additional work. I can understand the benefits of having a upgraded, a reviewed land use by law in place for those people that are more proactive in looking to the future, but we do have an existing land use by law that can serve us in the interim. So I think I will be supportive of the motion before us, that is, to put a halt on this process moving forward, so.
Anybody else want to make a comment?
I appreciate the, the response today. I think it was great. I know I've had multiple questions, just even over the weekend, and once the discussion was had, a lot of people have said, I'm fine with what the process that has taken place, and they were fine with the changes going forward, realizing that the changes, further changes could still happen. And I know for myself, spending almost 24 months on this, on the heels of an MDP review and on the heels of an amalgamation, that administration and this council have spent a significant amount of time and work over the last two years, the last half of this term. So knowing that the knowledge is sitting at this table as we've worked through this for the last 24 months, I would be scared to put a halt, in my opinion, because we still have 90 days left to actually bring a better document to the public. So I'm not in favor of postponing until after the municipal election. I would like to see this postponed and have Administration bring back some changes at the next meeting on August 26th. I think that would be more prudent with our time because it, everything is, like, fresh, and it's opportunity for us to continue to just, to communicate and to talk with you in regards to what further changes or what you agree with and what you don't. But to just put a full stop, I don't think it's prudent, and part of our fiduciary duty and our responsibility as council to, to not, to not continue. I think this is too important of a document, and I have to agree with Counselor Radcliffe in the regards, there is some good here, and it's just going to be unfortunate for those people that have been waiting for some of the changes to happen. That won't happen if, if this doesn't get passed in a timely way. So if there is significant changes to the document, absolutely, there should be a public hearing. Like any document that gets changed significantly, that is part of our mandate in, sorry, our MGA, but I, I believe, Director Hager, you could answer that way better than I could.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the opportunity. I don't want to try and sway a decision. Council can make the decision that they wish to, but I want to, just for, I know you are aware of this process, but just for the, the public in the room. So if a by law passes first reading at a public hearing, only those who've sat for the public hearing can read second and third reading. So if it's post or tabled today for further review by elected officials sitting at the table today, that could proceed with changes. If their material, it'd be up to the discretion to have a process start over again. You can only have one public hearing. So what would happen in a process would be that you would restart the process with a new by law number. There'd be a first reading, another period of time for advertising, a second and third reading. Now, if that's post-election, there's, there's likely parties that, because we have a new division, that would, didn't hear that first reading. That's, there's a possibility that we couldn't do that. So again, that's the discretion of council, that which, which way you'd like to go with your motion on the floor.
Thank you, and thank you for the clarification. Sorry, we don't do these big documents often enough. It's usually just a quick land use by law change and, and, or for a public hearing, so I apologize for misleading. I didn't realize that. No further public hearing. Counselor Lahied?
Sorry, I actually didn't intend to press the button, but if it's providence, I'll speak for just, and really share some of my, my concerns around this, this subject. Maybe I'll just start by saying it's been my absolute honor to serve this community for nearly eight years. I look forward to the future success of Clearwater County, and I know this document, whenever it is eventually received by the community, will benefit the community for sure. The difficulty I have at the moment with it more so is understanding the comments that we had today will take some time. I see a whole gamut of comments ranging from the simplest thing of that I just hate everything about the county, to ones that we need this to move forward, and to really find the balance in all those comments and really understand the direction that's there, and also the other things that the community has shared around more global, more federal, more provincial type issues that we are somewhat, we are not in control of those things, whether it deals with AHS, or it deals with the, the challenges that we've had with Ottawa ongoing. Again, we're faced with a, a document, a set of regulations, a set of guides that really hopes to improve the quality of life for everybody in Clearwater County. That message hasn't got across universally. It hasn't got through clearly, and even those that are working together for the common good don't see the overall benefit in this. So I think that's why I'm saying this needs a bit more work before we get to that eventual point of having a more workable, more concise, all those things that I've heard the community speak about this. I don't think we're quite there yet with this from what the feedback I've got today. So that's why, again, I'm voting on the side of the motion.
Counselor Radcliffe?
Thank you. Could you read back the motion? Did I misunderstand that this would be a full stop until a new council is in place, gets through budget, gets through whatever, gets their feet under them, and can deal with this?
Ms. Thompson?
Sorry.
Yep.
There it is. Okay. That council table second and third reading of by law 25/050 for the adoption of the Clearwater County land use by law until after the 2025 municipal election.
Yeah. Okay. The oath of office I made was to the people. I would be happier with this motion if it did not, that it was simply until the job was done, rather than coming to a full stop. And as I understand it from our legislative coordinator, that we would actually have to start over with a new, with a new council.
Director Hager?
Sorry, I missed, I missed your title.
No, no worries on the title. Thank you, Madam Chair. Correct in that post-election, should there be parties that weren't privy to the original public hearing, that essentially tabling at post-election, should there be parties, they wouldn't be able to vote on the by law at second and third reading unless you were present for the public hearing. So tabling could effectively just kill this version of the by law. It doesn't mean it disappears. Like, the by law will still exist in a, in a contextual manner. It just might need a new by law number, another first reading, another public hearing like this today, and then a second and third reading, should they wish to proceed post-election.
Counselor Sturmer?
I need some clarification. So this would have to happen after the election? Or could we have meetings before the election so that everybody here would have their say before the election, and we could get a new LGB instead of this old one that really doesn't do what the county really wants or what the people want? Because the old one really limits what people can do with their land. The new one allows them to do a lot more with their land.
Please, respect from the council, from the audience, please. Go ahead, Director Hager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And in terms of the question, the best I can say is council is at their discretion to do open houses, consult the public in whichever manner they wish. You can only have one public hearing for a by law of this nature. So there wouldn't be another public hearing process, but if the second and third reading happened post-election of this by law and process, and that by law has changed materially between now and the next election, the process would have to restart. So you would have to go first reading, advertise, public hearing, which is about a month process between the council's first reading, or more, it could be months. But it's generally a month because it's, the meeting happens on a Tuesday, the deadline for the publication of the advertising is the Mondays in some cases, so you would hit the next week, and then you'd have two weeks minimum advertising from that, and if you catch the next council meeting after that, it's usually about a month. But again, that's at council's discretion in terms of the, how they consult with the public, but in terms of the legislative process, it's first reading, time to advertise, it's legislated, public hearing, second and third reading. Now, tabling, second...
Now, tabling, second reading, post-election does make it complicated because the decision-makers have to have been at the public hearing. So it's going to be up to council on how they proceed.
Thank you.
Yeah, because what I hear with the people out here saying that there is a bunch of changes they would like to see. And I think we should listen to them, at least see what the change is and what we can do with those changes. Because if we postpone until after the election, we have spent in excess of hundreds of thousands of dollars already to get to this point. Are we going to spend that much again to get to the next one after the election?
Yes, go ahead, Director Hager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would say the same amount of money would not need to be expended, but certainly there would be costs for meeting time. Everyone's paid to attend meetings, whether it's a committee or a council member. Administration is paid regardless. But the paperwork already exists, so the creation of the document, the legal review, so the bulk of that cost would not be re-incurred again. It would just be the time and the process and the advertising, which there is a significant cost of advertising, but not nearly as significant as you mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor LaHead, please.
Thank you, Reeve Swanson, and I do appreciate the opportunity to speak again on this. I'm not immune to the comments that have been made in the audience. I can hear those background informations. God gave me two ears and one mouth, and I've been trying to use them in that proportion. I have listened. My concern is that I hold the responsibility I took as putting my name forward as a counselor. I take that duty very seriously. I take the promise that I made to work in good faith towards our strategic goal, which was within this term, to complete a land use bylaw, very seriously. I am just seeing that with the best intentions, even though I am very willing to do the work, the sands of time are running out for us to keep revolving through a process of public hearings, amendments. And so I'm seeing that some of the potential amendments to the existing land use bylaw may be more, may be deep enough that it would require that public hearing process again. And I think in fairness, we're into a cycle then that puts our community through an unnecessary process at that time, keeps that angst, that angst boiling within the community. It's maybe better if that is left to a point of time where a council will be able to do the work again at some level and be able to incorporate what they hear in the process more fulsome than even this process that we've done. And I can only show my appreciation for not only the steering committee, but the PAC Committee and the efforts they've put into making this as fulsome a review as possible. I just still think we're just not quite there yet.
Okay, thank you. So are there any further comments? I can't see lights. No hands. All right. So Counselor Northcott has made the motion to table until after the municipal election. That's that in a synopsis. Is there any further comments, questions? If not, I will be, you very succinctly put it, Counselor LaHead, I will be supporting the motion, but my heart, it's hard to say that all the work that we've done the last 24 months has been put on hold. But hopefully the next round can make it go a little quicker. That's where I'm at, so. All right, Counselor Radcliffe, one final comment.
Yes, having given this some thought and listened to comments from my fellow counselors, I really do want the good work here to continue without delay, so I will not be supporting this motion. But I will support one that tables second and third reading and continues the work, no matter how long it takes, maybe into the next election, maybe not. But I'd like to keep the momentum going. We've received a lot of input from everyone today and that would guide us in moving forward to draft seven.
All right, thank you for your comment. So with that, Counselor Sirmak, you bet.
I would like to back Counselor Radcliffe. I believe that this is on a new to everybody out here. I would like to see us continue with this. If we get it done before the election, great. If we don't, it'll go after. I do not want to see this stopped until after the election. Everything will stop, we'll convert back to the old way, and there will be nothing happen until probably budget time next year, which is in December.
Any other further comments, questions? So this motion's on the floor. I will call the question. All those, yes, all those in favor. One, two, three, those opposed. And motions carried, or defeated, sorry.
You didn't ask that far from Caroline.
I voted, so, anyway, so motions are, so we have options ahead of you. Go ahead, Counselor Radcliffe.
Thank you, Reeve Swanson. I will make the motion that the second and third reading be tabled, that the PAC, the Public Advisory Committee, be convened, and we'll continue on getting a more presentable document that reflects the input we've received here today.
You're not speaking for any of your constituents.
Oh, yes, I am.
Okay, thank you for the motion. The motion is that the LUB be tabled and continue to work on the revisions of draft, proceed with the draft seven, I would imagine. With this, I would, just looking to administration, is that, okay, council discretion, very good. Any comments or questions on the motion? Counselor LaHead.
Again, I appreciate your latitude for another comment. Definitely, this is the second best, not, it's a good solution. I don't believe it was the best solution or best motion, but I will be supporting it because I am certainly willing to keep working for the benefit of our community through the process.
Very good. Counselor Melhoff.
Thank you. I actually have an administrative question. If this is tabled today, we can continue to work on it, and it can still be defeated at any point when it comes back for reading at any point. This is merely continuing the work.
Yes.
Are we allowed to say anything?
That is correct, Counselor.
Thank you.
The public hearing is close, so, sorry. Any further? Yeah, go ahead, sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, no worries, thank you. This will continue the work, and it can still be defeated should the work not be completed. So I will support the tabling of this to continue the work that we are doing and hopefully be able to put in the amendments that I have, my residents have given me, and the ones we heard today.
Okay, thank you. Any other further comments? Counselor Northcott.
I don't know, it seemed very evident that the large majority of people really don't approve of this document. With this being tabled, maybe there's a possibility that this document could be improved to a level where residents would find it acceptable. This isn't a decision on second and third reading to adopt this, so to table it and still allow the comments that were said today to be considered for, to make amendments to the document, I'll support a second read of tabling it and allowing to proceed with amendments to hopefully improve this document.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else would like to comment, counsel? No, seeing none? I'll be supporting the motion. I think that this is what we can do, and as I've stated earlier, comments are, your comments have been fresh, and it's something that we can work on right away. And everybody's in the know right now, so that's the good thing, that we can continue to have these conversations with our residents. Anyway, so with that, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion to table second, third reading in favor. And that motion's carried, thank you. So with that, there's only one other item on our, Counselor Northcott, would you make the motion to adjourn?
Make the motion for adjournment.
Thank you. All those in favor, and that's carried, thank you.